Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for June 22nd. Leading us off in the pledge of allegiance will be a longtime resident of the city of Thousand Oaks, I think more than 50 years, and one of the best-known sisters in our community, Sister Lisa McGaffin with the Sisters of Notre Dame.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sister Lisa. I think this is the first time you've led us off on a pledge, as far as I can remember. All right, Madam Clerk, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Here.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña.
Present. Thank you. We will now go to, oh, number four, yes. We are going to start off our meeting after public comments with item 12C, I believe it is, and that is dealing with the homelessness update. We have a couple of representatives here, we have our deputies here, Deputy Richter and Deputy Cordoba, who are the vulnerable population officers with our Sheriff's Department, or TOPD, and since homelessness is on the mind of many people, I thought it would be good if we started off with that before we have our public hearings. And with that, I turn it over to our city manager, who's finally sitting next to me along with our city attorney for the first time in more than a year, and without a mask, Mr. Powers.
Thank you so much, and really pleased to be up here on the dais, and also pleased to report this will be my last COVID-19 update from the dais here, as we have entered into a full statewide reopening as of last week, and so we've really turned that page. Just want to remind everyone, for all information regarding vaccination or any questions around COVID-19, the county maintains their website, VenturaCountyRecovers.org, it's a great place for information. Wanted to use the concluding period of my comments to do a quick introduction to our city, new member of our city team. I think for those that track the news know that we had a transition in our police chief ranks with Chief John Freihoff moving to another post within the Sheriff's Department, and so we've gone through the process of selecting our next chief here, and that is our new chief of police, Jeremy Paris. Wanted to give Jeremy an opportunity to step forward, meet the community, and offer a few words. Jeremy, mic is yours.
I'm super thrilled to be here. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for a very long time, lots of family here. I've been with the Sheriff's Department for 23 years, haven't worked in Thousand Oaks before, worked mostly on the west side of county, but very, very excited to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, Jeremy.
Welcome to Thousand Oaks, chief. Welcome.
I know everyone, over the course of the weeks ahead, will have a great opportunity to get to know Chief Paris, and we welcome him here to our city team. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, and next up, we have the Community Commitment Award. So once again, I'm so pleased to be able to introduce everyone to the sixth recipient of our monthly Community Commitment Award, and this month is Kathy Nass. Kathy Nass has volunteered with Harbor House for the past three years, and even during the height of the pandemic, she continued her invaluable volunteer work. Kathy serves Harbor House's daily meal program. She gives so much more, though, to their clients, to all of our homeless populations, such as helping one elderly client set up his cellphone when he was having trouble. She knows each client by name, and she is a comforting presence to those who are homeless or living in poverty. Kathy is a joy for both the clients, and the staff, and volunteers. She exudes a spirit of calm, which has helped de-escalate many contentious situations. The staff at Harbor House describes Kathy as a rock of support, and it is the reason they have nominated her for this award. So unfortunately, Ms. Nass is not here tonight to accept her award, but of course, I'm very happy to share this video about her.
Hi, my name is Claudia Bill de la Peña, and I am the mayor for the city of Thousand Oaks, and I am here today with the Community Commitment Award recipient for the month of June. Her name is Kathy Nass, and she's been a volunteer for several years for Harbor House. Congratulations, Kathy. This is a certificate of recognition for you from the city, and here is your award.
Thank you so much.
You were nominated by the executive director and the operations manager of Harbor House because you have been a phenomenal volunteer for several years for the homeless population, our most vulnerable population. You volunteered throughout the pandemic, especially with no regard to your own health. You were there for when the homeless people needed you. Why?
You know, a lot of our clients really rely on this food. You know, this might be the only meal they eat during the day, this might be their only access to laundry or showers. You know, due to COVID, we had to suspend our regular community meal that we have every night of the week. Harbor House, you know, really had to think on their feet to adapt to COVID, you know, and got the lunch program up and running, and so for a lot of people, you know, this is one of the few resources they have.
You have a special place in your heart for the homeless. Why is that?
I think all of us go through our own troubles. I know I have, and I've appreciated the people, you know, that have reached out to me and been there for me, and, you know, I think it's just important to be there for the people that need, you know, a hand up. Since I started volunteering here, you know, the more I've volunteered here, the more I've enjoyed volunteering here, to be honest. I never leave here feeling negative, you know, I always feel better leaving here. I get to see a lot of instances of generosity in the community, you know, just a lot of acts of kindness, and among our clients, taking care of each other, and I always feel better when I leave here.
Harbor House nominated Kathy for this award because of her support for our meal program all during the pandemic, and we cannot say enough thank you, so we are so appreciative. You stepped up in a time that was scary, and you helped our clients, and our clients love you, our volunteers love you, and you're a calm presence, and you really deliver such a nice experience to those in need, and you make people feel good when they're around you, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin. There are so many donors from the community, businesses, houses of worship, Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops, and the individuals and families that every day are, you know, bringing the food for us to pack their lunches and provide, so that has made a really lasting impression on me.
That is just impressive, that so many people, so many members of our community want to help so much.
It's amazing.
Thank you so much, Kathy. Congratulations again on being this month's recipient of the Community Commitment Award. This is where we highlight people in our community that are shining a bright light after one year of darkness with the pandemic that we have been dealing with, and so you're one of those bright lights in our community. Thank you for everything that you are doing, thank you for having a heart filled with gratitude, appreciation, kindness, and generosity. If you know someone whom you would like to nominate for our Community Commitment Award, someone who's been volunteering under the radar without much recognition at all, 18 years and older, someone like Kathy, who's just been doing it for the love of helping, please go to our website, www.toaks.org/CCA.
And thank you to Harbor House and all of our charities, which help not only the homeless people, but we've had volunteers from senior organizations, from Safe Passage, from Adelante Comunidad, just to show you that we have a great community, and we can all work together if we just put our mind to it. So thank you again. All right, I want to go to public comments, but I also want to say that we have...
I pressed my button.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was just going to mention really quickly about how our community, speaking about community, our high schools have wonderful, wonderful athletes, and I hope that one of these days we will be able to honor them in person here. The Thousand Oaks Lancers baseball team just won a major, major, major title, and we had the Westlake High School girls' basketball win a major title. We have Nico Young, the fastest runner and a graduate from Newberry Park High School, just being part of the Olympic trials. So our community is wonderful, and I just wanted to let everybody know in case you hadn't heard, but go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, Mayor. In fact, I was going to mention the same thing, that Westlake High Girls' Basketball Team won the division, first time in 26 years, fantastic record. Congratulations to Josh Budd, the coach of the team, and as you mentioned, the T.O. Lancers, probably the best baseball team in the history of Thousand Oaks, if not the Ventura County, incredible record, 31 consecutive victories in a row. Congratulations to Coach Jack Wilson, they won the division title as well. So speaking of champions, Kathy's a champion, and so are all these kids that participate on these two teams. Let's give them a big hand.
I know we've tried to get a couple of them to City Hall. Paige Summers, Westlake High School, recent graduate, national record holder in pole vaulting, so hopefully we can get them all over here, that would be fantastic. All right, now we go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the display turns yellow when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. The first speaker is Anai Quiroz Romero, followed by Karen Martin, and then Gary Hartung.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and neighbors. My name is Anai Quiroz Romero, and I have walked the streets of this beautiful paradise for the last 17 years. I'm always proud of being a member of this community. Go Lancers! Today I want to talk about homelessness. When I was a senior in college, I did a project with Kathy Bernanke from the Ventura County Housing Coalition, and we went to the Samaritan Center in Simi Valley, and I was always impressed by, they had hot breakfast, they had clothes where people could just go in and take them that were already clean, and they could just change the clothes, and they also had laundry mats where people could come and do their laundry, and they could take showers, and they also provided other services, and I always thought that Thousand Oaks, at minimum, could have the ability to have this for our community as well. During that project, I met one man who was from Florida, who expressed that he was single, and he, you know, he did embrace the homeless living as a lifestyle, but that was the only person that I met like that. Everybody else was either somebody who has been a veteran, or people who do drugs, or people that sometimes they have mental illness, and they cut ties with their family members, and they're not able to get the help that they need. The reason why I did this project is because I wondered if I was going to find a lot of immigrants that were homeless, but I didn't find many because immigrants tend to have good connections with their communities, so we tend to be employed, and if we lose our jobs, we tend to have friends or people that we can count on. So that's why... One of the shelters that I saw was also part of the RAINN project, and it was next to the Ventura Harbor, and it's just this area where I think they had tents, and they had some porta-potties, and people could stay there for a while, and I would have never advocated for that type of homeless shelter here in Thousand Oaks, but right now that we have people already kind of tenting on a regular basis by the freeway on the 23, I believe that maybe that could be our first homeless shelter. There is a lot of interest in the community to have something like that, and we already had a lot of people that met for five years to try to have a homeless shelter in Thousand Oaks, but since the city didn't give the land, they ended their discussions because they weren't going anywhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Martin, followed by Gary Hartung.
Hello, thank you very much. My name is Karen Martin, I live in Thousand Oaks. It's been 13 years since I started my campaign to calm Lynn Road traffic. At that time, the staff told me you would listen to me because I wasn't crazy. Perhaps I am. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome. At first I thought you didn't know. Now I believe you know, you just don't care. I like to solve problems. After years of being told there weren't enough officers to patrol Lynn, I found out we have even less. 21 of 66 patrol officers have been committed to controlling the homeless. I don't believe it's a coincidence that response time has also increased over that time. I've asked for a camera surveillance to aid the officers in halting aggressive drivers. The Traffic Commission says they had looked into it, and it wasn't cost-effective 15 years ago. That's when BlackBerries were cutting-edge technology. What is saving a life worth? I understand the chief of police was just replaced. Tim Hagel approached me after a city council meeting in 2019, said he was excited that they were going to do some things to improve the chaos on Lynn. He would call, then he was gone. James Freihoff took his place, he too promised to help. A DUI checkpoint, a crosswalk sting, he would call. Now he's gone too. Most cities over 100,000 sign patrol on a per capita basis. That would equate to about 137 officers at a minimum. We have 44 to patrol 380 miles of road in Thousand Oaks. Perhaps the problem is not with the commander, but with the lack of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gary Hartung. Good evening.
Yes, I'm Gary Hartung from Thousand Oaks. This is about the third or fourth time I've spoken about the issue of not having a bathroom, public bathroom at the former Starbucks coffee shop there on the plaza at Moore Park Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I go over there almost every day for half an hour, patronize one or two of the shops over there, sit there, have my cup of coffee, then all of a sudden, I got to go to the bathroom. So, I got two choices. I either drive back home or drive down to some other coffee facility down the street there on Moore Park Road or down to Ralph's Grocery Store. I shouldn't have to keep asking the City Council to see that some relatively simple thing like this is done. Secondly, the Thousand Oaks library is open, only open from 10 to 2 o'clock on the days that it is open. It should stay open till probably 4 o'clock. I always don't have the opportunity to get over there right away when it opens up at 10 o'clock. And then the librarians are telling me, "Well, you only have an hour to get on the computer on the internet." That's another stupid rule. If nobody's using the computers over there, why shouldn't people be allowed to use the computers for more than an hour? Thank you.
Okay. And we now go to our consent calendar. Are there any items which my colleagues would like to pull?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to talk a little more about item H.
H, 7H. Anything else? If none, would you like to move the remainder of the calendar, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'll move the remainder of the calendar.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, item H.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what stage we're in, in the coping with the pandemic. I see that we're going to authorize an amount not to exceed 138,000 for future activity coping with the pandemic at the parking lot, the public parking lot there. And it seems like quite a bit of money since we're, we seem to be pretty well over the pandemic. So, my question is, why?
Good evening, Council. Mike Hauser, I'm the Transit Manager for the city. And Councilmember Jones, in response to your question, keeping in mind that that amount that you quoted is for expenses that have already, we've already paid for the last nine months under this program, so this is actually an amendment to extend it potentially up to an additional six months. As you know, we're still in a period of uncertainty and having the ambassador in the lobby of the Transportation Center, even though masks are not required at this moment in time, we still want to encourage that. Those ambassadors also provide sanitation supplies to people that request them. And they also provide an element of information to those people that are using public transit and we're seeing quite a few people from out of the area that have questions. Certainly, we're going to monitor the situation and if we deem it necessary or prudent to go ahead and cancel the services that are being provided earlier than what the contract, the six-month extension is requesting, we're prepared to do that. We're actually monitoring this on a week-to-week basis. This particular report was prepared in anticipation almost two months ago.
Now, I don't mean to be critical, but what is the average salary of this person or persons?
I'm not privy to what the company is paying, but we're paying approximately $27 an hour for the service. So, that would be for salary and benefits and whatever other overhead this company is charging us.
Well, I can see this as a long-range, I mean, I understand COVID strikes when it gets cold. So, perhaps there's not an immediate need for this. I don't know. Maybe I'm being too frugal here, but it seems like a pretty good hourly wage if most of the time they're replacing supplies in the restroom and so forth.
No, to be clear, Councilmember, this person is actually stationed within the lobby and they're providing direct assistance to each and every single patron that enters and exits the lobby. So, they're having literally hundreds and hundreds of interactions with potential riders and customers on a weekly basis in addition to supplying a necessary face mask for those people that want them, hand sanitizers, and they're also wiping down the high-contact areas. This is a preventative measure and a best practice in our industry right now.
Well, was any of this done prior to the pandemic or is this all pandemic-related?
This is all pandemic-related and is also being paid for with monies that we have specifically gotten to deal with pandemic-related expenses.
Do you relax it a little bit in the summer when it's less likely that this is going to spread and maybe bring it to a higher level when the weather gets cold?
And we can certainly, we can certainly monitor that. Right now, that person is there for approximately 90% of the hours that the building is physically open to the public. And of course, our peak times are first thing in the morning and late in the afternoon. So, there may be some ways that we can look at perhaps curtailing that service midday.
It just seemed to me on first blush, this was a little incongruous with the pandemic ending. So, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser and Mr. Jones, would you like to move approval of this?
Yes, I'll move approval.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Actually, I've got a, my hand is up there for a question.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Go ahead.
Mr. Hauser, I'm trying to give you your exercise for the day. For those in the audience, he's walking up and down the stairs quite nicely. So, the clarification is that Mr. Jones pointed out that this service did not exist before the pandemic. It's there as a result of the pandemic, paid for by pandemic funds. However, this, obviously pandemic is basically relinquishing, which is nice. Very excited about that concept. At what point do you anticipate that that service will no longer be needed?
I think that once we've had a period of time where it is acceptable and accepted that the vast majority of our patrons are not concerned about masking up or needing to mask up, or that we have no specific direction from the Federal Transit Administration or TSA with regard to mask usage, up until just two weeks ago, we were still required to have people, for instance, at our bus stops masked up even though they were outdoors and California had already relaxed or were preparing to relax their rules. On our buses, even though there is a relaxation in California, masking up is still required on all of our transit vehicles at this time. So, this is another component that they help assist with. That particular direction from the federal government is currently still on the books through September 13th.
So, do you have an exit strategy at some point of outcome measures?
Yes, sir, we will. And we'll look at that and we will wind down this program either with a partial reduction in hours or a full cancellation of the program when we feel that it's prudent or appropriate to do so.
Thank you. No other questions? And Madam Mayor, I don't know, do we want to have him go upstairs and I'll ask another question, bring him down?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Angler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now go to item 12A. 12A is an update on our homelessness situation and this will be presented by our Assistant City Manager, Ingrid Hardy. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to provide you with an update on homelessness. It's actually kind of nice to be back in the chambers and to see us getting back to our normal business. First off, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Bill De La Peña and Mayor Protem Angler for just all of your work and efforts over this past year and then some, you know, from going on ride-alongs with law enforcement to meeting persons experiencing homelessness in the field, to all of the multiple phone calls and discussions we've had. So, I appreciate your efforts and commitment. Tonight's presentation, there's going to be four elements to the presentation. Provide a background on homelessness and the city's response. Then I'll go into our homeless numbers and demographics, followed by challenges and opportunities, and then what our next steps will be. Addressing homelessness has been a priority of the City Council since 2018 when the Ad-Hoc Committee was formed. Shortly after the formation of the committee, the committee members spent a significant amount of time learning the landscape of homelessness in Thousand Oaks by meeting with several organizations, business owners, law enforcement and the faith community. Recognizing the complexity of the crisis, the city committed to serving as the convener between county agencies, residents, businesses, nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations and law enforcement in responding to homelessness. While oftentimes homelessness is characterized one dimensionally, locally, our vulnerable populations fit a range of demographics and the issue presents itself in many forms. According to the National Coalition of For the Homeless, the leading causes of homelessness are reflected on this slide here, including mental illness, unaffordable healthcare, inadequate retirement, the cost of living, affordable housing, transition of foster care and others. Additionally, we know that for Thousand Oaks, youth transitioning out of foster care and retirement are particularly some of the issues that have been brought to our attention. These are five components of a homeless crisis response system. And the goal of a crisis response system is to make homelessness rare, brief and non-recurring. An effective response system identifies and quickly connects people who are experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness to housing assistance and other services. Each component could include the participation of one or more agencies, organizations or institutions. As the local convener, the city works with multiple agencies and organizations in addressing homelessness. And there are some gaps currently in our response system that I will touch upon later in the presentation. In 2018, when the Ad-Hoc Committee, the Ad-Hoc Committee presented several areas of focus. You wanted to align the city's strategies with the county's regional and use a regional approach to addressing homelessness. We developed robust education and outreach materials. You continue to provide funding to local nonprofit organizations such as CDBG and our Social Services Endowment Fund. We continue to focus our efforts on maintaining public spaces and facilities to the highest standards possible. You also encourage the inclusion of affordable housing units in future residential projects. And we also have taken the necessary administrative actions to strengthen our response to homelessness. And we've worked diligently and in partnership with law enforcement. These are some of the accomplishments, if you will, or actions of the city in response to those areas of focus. With regards to the regional approach, the City Council approved an MOU with the County of Ventura. The MOU called for a joint commitment to address homelessness through actions such as participation in the Coordinated Entry System, development of a crisis response system, which includes emergency housing resources, and also the pursuit of permanent housing units. Local resources and information have been centralized on the city's website. We've conducted outreach campaigns such as "Don't Give Change, Help Create It" to discourage residents and others from giving to panhandlers and instead to give to organizations that are providing services to our unhoused. And the Ad-Hoc Committee also hosted a well-attended symposium. That was a couple of years ago, but it really helped build the understanding of homelessness in Thousand Oaks and some of the challenges we're facing locally. Additionally, the council has awarded over $800,000 to nonprofits for homeless services. And after the Boise ruling, the City Council updated the municipal code or approved the update to the municipal code to distinguish between sleeping versus camping. We've also staffed from Public Works, Community Development and the City Manager's Office. We have participated in several meetings and plans to address our growing encampments. And since 2018, you've also approved over 150 units of affordable housing through the pre-screen process. So, now I'll talk about our homeless numbers and demographics. The Point in Time Count is a federal mandate that is used to allocate state funding for homeless and housing resources. By HUD's definition, the count includes persons who are in emergency shelter, in a motel paid for by a program, living in transitional housing, or persons living in spaces not meant for human habitation. The count does not include those individuals that are doubled up in housing or staying with family or friends. Those persons that are able to pay for their own motel room are at-risk populations and also the, anyone who's in an institution such as a jail or hospital. This is the data from the Point in Time Count that was conducted in 2020. For 2021, we did not have the annual Point in Time Count to count the unsheltered and that was because of the risk that COVID presented to our volunteers and others who assist with that account, who assist with the count. But I did want to give you a sense of where we are just countywide as well as locally. In 2020, there were 1,743 homeless adults and children living in Ventura County. This was an increase of 4.4% since 2019. And in Thousand Oaks, our count increased by 47.5% from 2019 to 2020. This slide just shows the totals by jurisdiction and Thousand Oaks has the fourth-largest homeless population in Ventura County. And in the Point in Time Count report, which is available on the Continuum of Cares website, there's a lot of data related to sub-populations and this is just a snapshot of some of that data. You can see that the age of our homeless population is distributed pretty evenly. And then to the right there, you'll see other sub-population data. And just to be clear on this, this is data that is self-reported by individuals experiencing homelessness and they can self-report on multiple, on all of these, one or more. And so, for the second year in a row, persons experiencing homelessness for the first time is one of the highest that we've seen. So, this year, 36% of, or in 2020, 36% of individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness, it was their first time. And I just want to say that this is partially due to the need for more prevention, the high cost of housing and the low number of available or alternative housing options. So, I want to take a moment, you know, Claudia, or the mayor, I apologize, Mayor Bill De La Peña, mentioned that we have deputies in our audience today. And so, I certainly want to thank Deputy Richter and Cordova. They are our vulnerable population officers. They practically know every homeless person by first name, by their first name. They are responsive, resourceful, and they're a key connector for the city and social service agencies. And so, they play a critical role for us, which is outlined here on this slide. And one of the things that they do is they conduct an annual count. And the reason for that is because the Point in Time Count only captures our unsheltered homeless one night out of the year. And it doesn't really give you an accurate accounting of how many persons are actually experiencing homelessness. And so, some of the other roles that they play, they assist our unhoused with alternatives to homelessness, they collaborate with our service providers, they do have, you know, there's direct enforcement when needed, but as you can see there in the image... there's direct enforcement when needed, but as you can see there in the image, based on the number of average contacts that they have per month, there's an average of 18 arrests per month, or only 5% of those contacts are arrests. They really do focus on trying to get people connected with services and finding alternatives. They've also played a significant role in responding to resident and business concerns, and also dealing with our encampment response and coordination. So based on the last count that was conducted in 2020, we're just under 250 persons who are experiencing homelessness. This is an estimate, but again, likely more accurate than the point-in-time count. TOPD has a more expansive counting system. They know where people are, including motels, hospitals, and jails. As far as the living conditions of the individuals that have been counted by TOPD, from 2019 to 2020, you can see that there has been an increase in the number of persons living in encampments. And there is also an increase in the number of individuals who are in hotels, and that is likely due to the state's Project Room Key program, as well as the dollars that the council approved last year to provide motel vouchers. And then lastly, with regards to understanding how the number of homeless, and on this slide would be in Ventura County, but the Ventura County Office of Education, they also, under federal statutes, track homelessness, and they report about 6,366 students that are at risk of homelessness. And 11% of those students meet the HUD definition of homelessness, which was covered in the previous slide. Furthermore, the Ventura County Healthcare Agency reports that nearly 12,000 persons are enrolled in the healthcare for the homeless program, and about 30% of those persons meet HUD's definition of homelessness. So next I'll cover our challenges and opportunities, and I want to start with Martin versus the city of Boise. And this essentially states that "it is cruel and unusual punishment for municipalities to criminalize the act of sleeping outside if there's no available shelter. As a result, any ordinances that ban or prohibit the act of sleeping on public property when an individual has no other options, it's considered unconstitutional." So the city updated its ordinance to differentiate between camping and sleeping, and sleeping is allowed on public. The city, city council, they regularly receive complaints from residents and businesses about the encampments, and they want to see the city respond or do something to address homelessness. In fact, in the last statistically valid survey by the city, addressing homeless issues was among the two specific, top two specific changes that residents mentioned when asked what the city could do to improve the quality of life in Thousand Oaks. Approximately 6 in 10 respondents also reported or supported the city incentivizing underperforming hotels or motels to accept temporary housing vouchers as an option, and that was supported by 62%. 62% of those surveyed also indicated that creating a temporary homeless shelter in Thousand Oaks that they would support. And 59% of those surveyed indicated that providing permanent housing with supportive services for homeless in Thousand Oaks is needed. Another challenge we're facing are the short periods of stay after an arrest. Oftentimes, when a homeless person is arrested, they may not stay in custody for very long. Quite often, they're in custody for a few hours and then released, and then they return to the same place where they were arrested. And so when the courts are not prosecuting, issuing fines, or giving probation, this does present a challenge. And, you know, as you'll hear from our officers, the lack of accountability or the fear of any accountability sometimes presents a challenge. Lastly, our challenge, another challenge, is that we do not have emergency housing. And so again, going back to the first bullet point there with the Martin versus city of Boise, there is nowhere to send anyone for temporary shelter and to get them permanently housed, or the options are limited. So our opportunities, and in alignment with your adopted priorities for the next fiscal year, we have an opportunity to pursue temporary shelter and permanent supportive housing. And other opportunities we can continue to support are our city grant programs, CDBG, SSEF, and providing dollars to nonprofit organizations to serve our unhoused population, and also pursuing federal, state, and county funding. So to that end, in order to prepare for state funding that will be released later this summer, and in alignment with council's priority to identify in advance solutions for temporary and permanent housing, we are releasing an RFQ on Thursday for a developer-owner-operator. We are seeking a qualified developer to, as a partnership, or I'm sorry, we are seeking a qualified organization or partnership between organizations to identify a suitable location in Thousand Oaks for temporary and permanent supportive housing. Staff will return to the council after your summer recess if there is a viable option to request authority to enter into an agreement with the developer-operator and to also apply for the state's Project Home Key funding. And then lastly, one of the discussions that we've had with the ad hoc committee is creating a five-year homelessness plan for the city, and this would be in alignment with the county's greater homelessness plan. But the purpose of that would be to provide council, you know, city staff, organizations that are serving the homeless with strategies and actions on how we can best do that, how to prioritize, where to direct our resources, and will also help us measure our progress and success towards managing homelessness. So that concludes my presentation. Again, we have our vulnerable population officers here in the audience tonight that are available to answer questions, and we also have Tara Carruth, who's representing the county and the Continuum of Care, who is available to answer questions along with myself. So thank you for letting me present this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hardy. Really appreciate this very important update. I know that our community cares a great deal about the issue of homelessness in our community. I'm going to go down the list of council members' questions before I go to the public speakers. Mr. McNamie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Officers, feel free to come forth. I'm going to have some questions for you because you're the ones that are actually on-site, working with this population, and I'd like to hear more from your input. When I speak with law enforcement and my own experience with the homeless population, I keep hearing that it's about 80% of the homeless that are there have, dealing with and fighting mental illness as well as drug addiction. Given the Boise situation where we have to have housing as an option for the homeless, excuse me, once we get them into housing, do we have the ability to encourage them to get that mental health care, whether it be counseling and/or medications to help them be stable and more functional, and/or drug rehab to get them off of whatever drug addictions they have? What is the state and what's the court rulings at this point regarding intervention to help this population?
Generally, when we get somebody into that type of atmosphere, when it comes down to getting that type of assistance, it's still incumbent on that person to receive it and want that assistance. So a lot of what we do is we work with Ventura County Behavioral Health and have them assist us with getting them into those type of environments. So good case management generally helps out a lot, and that's what we try to push on, you know, not as much as push, but recommend when we are dealing with a person that's mentally ill.
Deputy, could you please get a little bit closer to the mic?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Now, to come back to your point, is that whenever the city or county goes in to clean up some of these homeless encampments, oftentimes you will find needles for heroin and/or crystal meth and/or any other drug use. So what I'm hearing is that they are given the opportunity to go into these homeless shelters, not compelled to relinquish any of their drugs they're currently using necessarily, not get into drug rehab to help them fight whatever addiction they have that put them on the street and keeps them on the street, that compels them to do perhaps crime to get money to obtain the drugs. That we cannot compel them to do in a homeless shelter. However, if they were in county facility, they would not have access to heroin, crystal meth, all the other lists that we have there. Is that correct?
No, that is correct.
Could you speak in the microphone a little bit more?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can hear myself.
It sounds great. The challenge that I have is that the population that, of folks that are suffering with mental illness, oftentimes, they're unstable, and they are in a bad place. And yet, many of them who I meet, after they get stable with medication and counseling, they wind up saying, "Thank you so much. I feel so much better. I now can reunite with my family." But yet, we as a state, as a city, as a county, can't intervene. Is that a correct statement? If they're not willing to accept that medication or help?
Yes, they have to want to have the assistance, but you are right. Whenever they do accept that assistance, it is a great feeling to know that we were part of that.
Now, when I speak to mental health therapists, they tell me that we have what I would call the catch-22 cycle. For example, the schizophrenic population, the folks that are suffering with that, they will get themselves into free counseling, free medication. The counselor gets them stable, gets them into a job. They now are able to get into an apartment and some sort of stable housing. But the way the law is written, as I understand it communicated to me by these mental health therapists, is that once they get to a certain income level or a certain savings level in their bank account, they lose the free counseling, the free medication, but don't make enough to afford that counseling and medication that keeps them stable in a job in an apartment off the street. So then they lose their job, lose their medication, lose their housing, they're back on the street again, and it's just a cycle that continues. What I've been told by mental health therapists, is that a correct statement?
If I, sorry, since Councilmember McNamie, we do have Tara Carruth in the audience also who works with the county and may be able to speak to, you know, mental health services that are provided by the county. My understanding is that those situations are individual with respect to the laws or circumstances surrounding that. I don't know if there's anything else that you would, that she would want to add to that.
Please, come on down and join in. Love to hear your input. Please, could you address that? Because again, I'm hearing this from mental health therapists, and I just want to verify if that is a correct statement.
So it is very individualized as far as what people's income they're obtaining and what they are eligible for. However, there are other programs aside Medi-Cal or Medicaid is for an individual. I think the eligibility is around $17,500 a year. So if you're over that, you're either going to have co-pays or get enrolled in other health insurance, whether through your employer or through Covered California or other resources. So there are other resources, but we're really working closely with individuals to make sure they have continuity of the services they need.
Let me share with you a disconnect I'm hearing. We're making an assumption that they can get onto other programs to provide those services of medication and counseling at a cost that they can afford based on the job they have. And on the other hand, I'm hearing from the mental health therapists who are on the front lines dealing with, saying that it doesn't work. So I need to drill down on this and communicate with you at a later date to talk a little bit more about what those programs are, as well as the mental health therapist, to find out where the gap is, because I believe the mental health therapists are telling me correct observations. And I believe what you're telling me is correct on the assumption that this is available to them. So there's a disconnect, I think, in here when there are revolving door of them going in and out of therapy.
I think that one thing I would want to point out is that the eligibility for those programs are federal and state-established, so happy to work with you and advocate, but know that those are not county-controlled policies around the eligibility for Medi-Cal, for instance.
Well, again, part of this is any problem solving. You have to address the underlying cause, then, okay, how do we fix it? And as you say, it may be a federal, it may be a state issue, but it needs to be addressed because these are people who need our help, and I'd like to get them into a purposeful life, and we need to address some of these problems that exist to get them to that goal. That's why I'm asking these questions. Now that I have you here, to the officers, I've heard from some other officers that made a comment that sometimes the people have all their belongings in a golf cart or a bag or a shopping cart or whatever, and they don't want to go into a facility for fear of losing their possessions. And therefore, they don't get their medication, their counseling for that reason. I've heard stories of officers standing out in front, guarding their possessions with the assurances, "Go in, get your care, come out, the cart will be here because I'm guarding it." In that case, is there any way in which on a county level or whatever is options are available, I would call it counseling under the stars, counseling under the trees, where we have the internet, where we're able to communicate and keep records on the cloud, and counselors with the law enforcement standing by go and meet them actually in the field under the trees and provide the medications and the counseling? Is that being done? Is that a possibility so that way we can get to everybody to help them at least get the care that they need? Whoever wishes to answer, I'm open to ideas.
Well, yeah, so there are outreach services throughout the county through, with partnerships with behavioral health and law enforcement, through the county's One Stop Program, which is the healthcare for the homeless program, Backpack Medicine, where they are going out into the field with crisis mental health and addiction specialists. And then our nonprofit agencies are also doing outreach in partnership with law enforcement. So there are resources that are happening at those times. I would say that some of the gaps are nights and weekends and non-traditional hours because most of the county and nonprofit agencies operate during regular business hours.
So let me just come back and rephrase it in a different way. Do we have patients that are homeless out there that we have counselors with law enforcement protection going out, meeting them in the streets, under the trees, in the parks, to do the counseling and medication on a regular basis?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, great. That's all the questions I have. This is a challenging, challenging issue. Ingrid and I had a wonderful lunch and talked about this a little bit more, and I want to drill down and learn more about this with you and what services are available to help address this issue. There may be an answer, there may not be, but at least I'll give it a try. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for being here tonight to give us some good answers. The work you're doing with behavioral health is important, and my colleague here touched on it a little bit. Is there more that we can do in that realm? You know, if it's a matter of being there on weekends, is that something that can be addressed?
I believe as far as changing our hours, we generally from 7:00 to 5:00, when we're doing our outreach, we're able to meet with everyone that we know is willing to get help. It really is a matter of, at this point, spending time to develop those relationships and that rapport, or meeting that person when they actually are willing to take services. Unfortunately, right now, when we might find somebody that is willing to go to a treatment or going to rehab, a bed may not be available for them. It's kind of a first-come, first-served basis. And then when a bed is available, maybe a day or two later, they're not in that mindset to want to take the help. So at this point, it really is, we continue to do what we can to develop relationships and establish rapport with people to at least want to get them to that point where they want to take some help.
Yeah, if I can address that real quick. Just so everyone's aware, almost all of our deputies are trained in crisis intervention techniques. So you see the two experts here, right, that like have all the connections and all the details on all the little caveats on how to get stuff done? But all of our deputies have some level of expertise in this. So even though they may not be working, the deputies that are contacting them know what to do, and then their referrals end up back with them so they can follow up later. So even though you may see that there's gaps in time, obviously, they can't be working 24/7, all the other deputies have a role in this too. It's not just... It's not just on these two. These two are just happen to be like the experts to make sure all the, you know, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So, if that helps.
Thank you. Yeah, it's one of the things that I point to with pride that the city does is have both of our officers, our vulnerable population officers, out there on a daily basis and the good work they're doing. Is my question, I think, is if you could point to maybe one or two things, what would be as helpful as possible to start addressing more of this issue? Because we're already addressing the issue. But what would be a, something that would be of more assistance to you? Is it the lack of available beds? Is it the follow-up wraparound services issues?
Yeah, I do believe it's having the case management that's able to oversee continuously, have them come out and continue to assess and come up with game plans on what to do, on how to beat the issues that they have. I would love to see, you know, something to that effect where if they work with us, they go out and contact, getting them to appointments, getting them medicated, giving them the assistance they need, and eventually, you know, get them into the wraparound services and everything that they would require from that point on. It would be really beneficial.
And one final quick question on our encampment issues. Where are most of the encampments? Are they on city property or are they state property, county property? Where are they located?
The main encampments are generally on state property.
Thank you.
And Mayor Protem Engler, if I could just add too, with regards to case management and outreach services, we also have local nonprofit organizations that, you know, are out in the field on a regular basis, connecting with persons experiencing homelessness and trying to get them connected to services. I'm pretty sure they have Juan and Josh on speed dial. So there is that constant connection and service being provided.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
As much as possible.
And to that end, just to add to it, and perhaps Ms. Carruth can speak to it, you saw it in Ingrid's presentation, but the coordinated entry system has probably been one of the biggest transformations that we've seen in recent years here, where we have a fabric of great nonprofits across the county, but not having one overarching system where if you have a contact in Ventura on one day and Thousand Oaks later in that week, now there's a backbone system that allows you to understand where those contacts are happening. And that has been, and to receive funding, a lot of these agencies have to sign on to that coordinated entry system, and that all rolls up under the continuum of care. So I just want to make sure to re-highlight that.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank Josh and Juan for the great job you do out there. I've been out touring with you, and it's not an easy job. Many times, you're dealing with unstable people, and it takes a lot of patience and understanding, and I really appreciate the fact that you two guys are out there. I have a concern, and I think it's a concern I hear most often in the city, is about the encampments. Needless to say, for those of you who read the media, some of the encampments in other cities have grown completely out of control. Here in Thousand Oaks, they have grown, but I wouldn't say they're out of control. They're being managed, but they are growing. And I guess I have a quick question for Ms. Noonan, if I may. How do we just, and I understand the Boise ruling, you can't criminalize sleeping. I get that, and people have a right to sleep, and they can do that if there are no beds to offer, and we don't have any beds to offer. So, but how do we distinguish between sleeping and an encampment?
Well, per our ordinance, sleeping is, again, there's, you might have some rudimentary bedding, such as pillows, sleeping bag, that's considered sleeping. But camping, as defined in our ordinance, will include such items maybe as a camping stove or a tent or other personal items, where it's not just a person who is sleeping, but is actually taking up residence almost or camping on property. And one thing I also want to mention is that although the Boise case prohibits sleeping, prohibits the city from prohibiting sleeping if we don't have an emergency shelter, one thing that we did do is because of our concerns over wildfire and environmental impacts to our open spaces, we also prohibit sleeping in our open space. So you cannot camp anywhere in the city, you cannot sleep in the open space, but you can sleep on public property in the city outside of the open space.
Okay. And yet, even with that in mind, we still have encampments. And, you know, it's just a fact of life, not a particularly good fact of life, but it is. And so my question to the two deputies would be this. You know these folks out there, you know some of them by first name basis, you see them all the time. Ultimately, if what we're talking about tonight goes through and we're able to bring in a third party and hopefully find a shelter that offers emergency sheltering and permanent supportive housing, will these people in these encampments be able to be moved into a situation like that? Are they going to be amenable to that? Will you be able to coax them out of their tents and into a more manageable situation?
From the feedback that I get when I do go to the encampments and ask them, "What can I do to get you out of this situation?", the general feedback is, "Housing, that's just what I need." I have encountered very few people that tell me they just like sleeping outdoors, and that's their lifestyle, and I'm not going to change that. So to answer your question, I do believe we would get some good buy-in from the people in the encampments to go into some type of short-term or long-term housing if it's available.
That's good to hear. So that would be an option that you feel that could provide a solution to the situation here at Thousand Oaks?
I do, yes.
Okay. Because I've read anecdotal stories where there's some folks that, for whatever reason, want to stay out there. And, but I take it from what you're saying, that would be the minority.
Correct, yeah. I have heard that, that they enjoy staying outdoors, and that's the lifestyle they've chosen, but it's very few from our population at Thousand Oaks.
And as far as the encampments go, now, because we don't have any sheltering really to offer per se, how do you approach these encampments? Do you clean them up occasionally, or do we just kind of tolerate them?
No, we do blend enforcement with outreach. So the people that are staying in the encampments where I know that they're possibly on probation or something from the court ordered, we will go into their encampment, offer outreach, and also do direct enforcement if there's any violations of law that they're committing. Also with, if it's somebody that we don't know, because it is considered a dwelling, we're not freely able just to go into the camp, we try to contact the person from the outside, have them come out, identify them, let them know what we are there to do, what we have to offer, and see if they're interested, at least document that they're now staying in that spot.
So it does seem at this point that you're able to manage these encampments to keep them to a tolerable level.
Yes, and getting back to cleanliness and things of that nature, we have worked with volunteer services who have gone through some of these encampments, done cleanup. We work hand-in-hand with Caltrans, Watershed District and all, county and other entities who want to come in and assist, and we make arrangements, and we'll take days where we'll come through and we'll do the cleanup and things like that. So we've had fire with a fire department come through. They are aware of all the locations, and if something was to happen, they have a response plan in place.
Well, I appreciate that, and hopefully, ultimately, we can offer you another option in dealing with this problem by providing some kind of emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing. Thank you both.
Councilmember Ren, I just wanted to follow up to your questions on encampment. Although the Boise case does significantly restrict a city's ability to regulate the locations of where a person may sleep, COVID actually made it that much worse, because after COVID came into being, CDC actually passed regulations that prohibited the removal of encampments because of the concern over transfer of COVID. So it's been kind of a double whammy, for lack of a better word. You have a significant housing shortage to begin with, and then you have COVID that prohibit, you know, there's just all of these things that add up to making it very restrictive on what a city can and cannot do.
No, I'm glad you mentioned that. I've heard that very thought, that, you know, with COVID, we don't want it to spread. So...
And that's one of the reasons why the ad hoc committees focus so much on temporary shelter, supportive housing. That's really what cities, that's one area that the cities can control.
Well, I know we're trying very hard as a city, and I know we can do better, and I know we're going to come up with an answer.
This encampment that was referenced along the 23 freeway is on Caltrans property, and it was cleared by Caltrans on May 12th, but it was said that Caltrans, nowhere in California will they be removing homeless people. They will stay there. So what you were seeing along the 23 freeway is that it was cleaned up slightly, but again, Caltrans will not be removing property or these encampments. And the biggest encampments are on state property, and when they go through and clean up like they did by the Oak Mall, that was over $100,000 in costs to remove that. That was pre-pandemic. So the biggest encampments are not on city property or not on county property, they're on state property. Just wanted to clarify that. Mr. McNamee had another question, and then again, Mayor Protem Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for you, again, this is on state property. What enforcement ability do you have to go into state property to exercise our ability to either provide law enforcement and/or address any issues with the homeless?
When we enter the state property, if there are any crimes that are being committed, like the illegal camping, things of that nature, that is a, they are the victims, and because nobody's being moved, they're gun-shy on doing anything about at that point. We go onto the property basically to provide outreach services. We bring people out there that are able to see, and we go out to assess if there is any hazards or anything that we can do and arrange for any cleanup. We know all of the people that are out there by name. A lot of us confide with us. If they need any, we've given rides to medical services, we've given a lot of things. So we're out there quite a bit dealing with things like that.
I found the homeless I've just talked to, they tend to be rather tight-lipped and silent as to the crimes that are taking place. Those that have shared with me, tell me about how the women are prostituted out, how they're raped. The one with the loudest voice and the biggest fists is the one that actually is the law within that encampment, and you guys are irrelevant as far as they're concerned. So it's one where you have your own little infrastructure of government taking place there, based on who's got the greatest force there within the encampment. And yes, I know and I understand that if shelter is not provided, if we break up an encampment, all they do is move to another area of the city. And the best way I can describe the homeless situation is that you've got two types. One is a person with a skill, a trade, who's down on their luck, out of a job, sleeping from couch to couch, or maybe sleeping in their vehicle. They'll be okay. Eventually, they'll get their jobs back and be able to make a living and get shelter. But it's the other population that doesn't have a trade. They're mentally challenged, they've got mental illness, they're drug addicted. Those are the ones that we are talking about at this point. Now, if they go into temporary shelters or permanent shelters, are you as law enforcement able to make certain they don't bring in their crystal meth, their heroin, their drugs, needles and so forth into the shelters? Or is that prohibited by law with the Boise?
Now, the shelters have their own rules in place when it deals with those type of situations. They have a right to refuse somebody who is obviously under the influence if they're bringing things in. I'm not the person to ask that question, but the, you know, Harbor House oversees the winter warming shelter, and they have been known to have turned people away that are coming in under those conditions.
So our county representative, I got a question for you, again, and so probably, again, it overlaps as most people are seeing here between county, law enforcement, state and so forth. Again, if we set up these temporary shelters to get them vocational rehabilitation, mental health care, get them stable and give them purpose in life so they can support themselves to one degree or another, what control do we have over them to be in those shelters, number one? And number two, not to provide or take in any drugs or any weapons or anything of that nature? And if they leave, are we able to then bring them over to county jail and say, "Okay, we're done. We gave you an opportunity here, you're now in county jail. Definitely no drugs and no weapons in county jail." What are legal options, given the rulings that have gone down?
So I can talk to you about what the policies of shelters are and some of the funding restrictions, but I can't speak to the legal ramifications of then taking someone to jail. So the, California follows, it's a state law that funding, we follow a housing-first approach. So that's low barrier, meaning we're not requiring sobriety, we're not requiring people to, we're not coercing people to take medication prior to entry. Now, behaviors and within a shelter program, if someone is doing illegal activity, if they are using, if they're disrupting other people, there are no weapons allowed in any of the shelters, then that could result in an exit. But it's all based on behaviors. So you might have a shelter that's low barrier, that allows someone who's had a little too much to drink to come in if they quietly go to bed and aren't being belligerent.
Let me ask the chief here. Chief, can I ask you the question then? Two gentlemen roll up.
I'd like to give other councilmembers a chance as well. I think we need to start limiting the questioning so we can get through the rest of the agenda. So if you would conclude with this?
I've got two left, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
Chief, this is very important stuff for the homeless.
Absolutely.
And I'm very passionate about it because I see them in my practice, and I've worked with them on the street and in the free clinic. This is why I'm drilling down on these questions, because I'd like to get some solutions here for Thousand Oaks. So everyone in the audience is clear that this is a passion for me. Your gentlemen roll up on a situation where a homeless person, they go into a shelter, they don't have any drugs on them, they're in the shelter, then they decide, "Oh, I don't want to be here anymore," and they go and leave. Do you have any options in which to escort them over to county jail?
So at that point, if they're just leaving the shelter, there wouldn't be any, right? They'd have to violate some kind of law. So if we go back to the camping ordinance or something like that, that's what would have to happen, there'd be some kind of law violated. So there's really two things with the shelter, right? When we talk about low barrier or we're not requiring a lot to get in, that's something that allows us to get more people in and have more ability to enforce camping ordinances. But if someone goes in and then decides to leave, if they're not breaking the law at the time, that, no, that we would not be taking them to jail.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hardy, my apologies previously calling you Ingrid, but we are on a formal level outside of the council, my apologies. Ms. Hardy, we, as a city, set up these temporary shelters to provide some services for them. Will they be receiving some sort of skilled training, vocational rehabilitation to get and become independent and find purpose in life? Or is it just simply housing that they are going to be in to get them off the street? What is the design of what we're asking?
So typically, what you'll find in a shelter is onsite case management services. So if someone's coming in and they require, you know, mental health services, they get connected to county behavioral health. If they require, you know, addiction-related services, they're connecting people to those types of services. For individuals that, you know, are not disabled and maybe just unemployed, or they're looking for employment, then you can also connect those individuals to those services to help them find gainful employment, you know, whether it's going back to school or finding some other trade. It can be set up in a way that, you know, we can collectively agree that is what's needed. But there are models out there, there's best practices out there, and those best practices are to, much like what Tara mentioned, is the housing first, to get them in housing, to get them stabilized, and then to do an assessment and identify what exactly they need to help them become, you know, self-sufficient. Not everyone can become self-sufficient. Some are disabled, some have, you know, permanent disabilities and require some level of assistance. But it really just depends on the person walking through the door.
So a person could come in and just say, "I'm on vacation now, I'm just going to live here and be a very cooperative person and not, and be homeless and taken care of by the state," and no exit strategy in mind?
No, typically, there's a housing plan. The goal is to get people permanently housed, and so those steps of how you get that person permanently housed is worked out between that individual and the case manager.
And it is possible that that person gets permanent housing, but just can't afford to have that permanent housing. to have that permanent housing dependent on the state forever and ever?
Um, well, I, you know, I, I guess that's going to be an individual situation. You know, for anyone that's receiving disability benefits or some other form of income, you, you know, most people do pay some portion of rent. There's housing vouchers. There's other ways to, you know, pay for, for their rent. So.
This is the beginning of a big project, and I look forward to continue work with you and law enforcement in the county in this area. And Madam Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence for letting me ask the questions I've asked. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to get to Councilmember Jones as well. I wasn't sure. It looked like you wanted to ask a question, but I didn't see your name on the list.
Oh, I, I thought we were just going one at a time. I didn't know you wanted me to turn on my request to speak. Let me say this is all very enlightening to me. It's a sad problem that we have. And I get a lot of calls, emails, et cetera, talking about the problem. And a lot of people are rather, I'm sorry to say, disgusted with the matter, and I wish they would be a little more tolerant. If any of them happen to be watching tonight, I hope they have appreciated and profited by what my fellow council members have brought out in terms of this discussion, because I think it's a genuine social problem that we all need to work on. And we should be sympathetic, I believe, and, you know, try to be understanding if possible. Has the pandemic had any effect on the numbers of homeless that we have experienced?
I would say since the pandemic started, we've been seeing more of an influx of people from out of the area. We were able to house a good portion of the, the homeless that were more vulnerable through Project Room Key. And then just started to notice, like I, as I said, just more people from out of the area that were coming up to Thousand Oaks.
Have we had experience with many people having the COVID that have been in these encampments?
I'm, I'm not aware. If anybody was, or had taken a test to see if they were positive or not, that, that never really came up in any of our contacts.
Okay. The other thing that I hear a lot, it's sort of like the guy that built a baseball field in the movie, you know, if you build it, they will come. And that's been one thing I've heard from several people on the internet, is that we may be just encouraging more homeless to immigrate to Thousand Oaks. And I have no idea if that's correct or not, but what is, is there an effect on having the nicest homeless camp in the county to all that come here? Or, I mean?
So one of the ways that Ventura County and all of the participating jurisdictions have approached this concern and challenge is by having the countywide MOU, that each city will implement their own response. And shelters and programs within each city often have a preference for their city residents to be served first in those programs. I would tell you that even when we have housing vacancies, people don't want to move from city to city. But we do obviously have some transient folks who are passing through from LA, who are, you know, coming into the transit centers. But most of our service providers are prioritizing local residents with all of their programs.
So there's not a large movement to try to get to the city that has the best homeless shelter, then?
No, that, I think that is a myth.
And what percentage of our homeless population would you say are homegrown? People that have grown up here and then after a while, they just didn't have a good enough job to pay their rent. So gradually, they were forced out of their residence?
So we ask those, those questions, and I think the deputies are also gathering that information locally to Thousand Oaks. But countywide, we're seeing that well over 90% of folks are, have strong ties to Ventura County or to the city that they're homeless in, whether they become homeless here or they became homeless someplace else and returned to what they believe is their home community.
And how many would you say are capable of being rehabilitated? I mean, I understand some have mental problems, some have drug problems. But what percentage would it be reasonable to think that if we could put them in a shelter for a while, help them get a job, help them clean up, that they could be on their own?
If we're able to connect people to the housing resource that they need, I'll cite our partners locally with Many Mansions, that we have over a 95% retention rate in the supportive housing programs countywide. So people are succeeding to a great degree when they are connected with the housing and the support services that they need.
And what percent would you say just are, you know, have too serious a drug or a mental problem to actually live, be able to live in a, in a normal, what we would call a normal type of living?
I can't really estimate, right. I can't.
I can't fully estimate that number, but I will tell you that through our efforts of providing Project Room Key, which is the non-congregate sheltering in motels through the pandemic, and that's been targeting people over the age of 65 and people with serious health conditions. We have had a small percentage of people go into nursing home care and other residential facilities because their service needs are too significant to live independently. But it's a pretty small percentage.
And finally, would you say that if we're able to, because of the fine work of the mayor and Councilman Engler on the committee, that we do get a, a shelter? Do you feel that we will be stemming the tide and gradually reducing the number of homeless in Thousand Oaks?
I think that the, the part about the, the city's plan that is really helpful is that there's shelter and housing as part of that plan, because shelter itself doesn't end homelessness. Housing does. And so having, continuing to focus on both components is really critical. Having housing come after shelter is, is really what makes the shelter successful and helps reduce homelessness in a community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. And I would like to thank you and Councilman Engler for the work you were doing on the committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Just before we go back to Mayor Potem Engler, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. Maybe a question for our deputies. The percentage of homeless persons in Thousand Oaks who either have strong ties to Thousand Oaks or are actually homegrown, what is that percentage, more or less?
I do believe we're well over 80% on that. Like my partner said, a lot do come in to the city, and it could be because of the, the free bus services and everything that comes in. When they do attempt to get services, either through Los Angeles Services or Harbor House, a lot of times they'll, they'll be advised that they serve those from Thousand Oaks before anybody else. And it's pretty short-lived when they're here. So they stay and may be here for a couple of days, and then we don't see them again.
Okay. And of that percentage of, of our, of our local homeless population, what is the percentage of those who are drug addicted or mentally ill?
I'm sure if we have that figure. Yeah, I mean, it'd be pretty safe to say over half. I don't have the actual figure.
Okay. And then regarding the, the rules, when you are in a shelter, I do know that Project Room Key Motel 6 did not allow at all any, anything, no alcohol, nothing at all, and that you were, I mean, a few people were kicked out because they went to the liquor store right next door or brought something else in. So there was a zero tolerance policy at the Project Room Key at Motel 6. Do you know the percentage of vaccinations that our local homeless received? Because they did, I think Harbor House administered with volunteers the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines. Do we know how successful that was? I know it was pulled off the shelves and then, and then reintroduced.
Yeah. I'm not sure if Harbor House is here. We have gone out based on requests from Backpack Medicine and to see if people would be requesting it. So we went to the larger camps and asked. And there is a, a need for it. Unfortunately, they haven't come in and set that up. I'm not sure what Harbor House's numbers are, though.
Okay. I know they, they held two clinics, and they, from what I heard, they were successful, but I don't know the number. What is the ethnic makeup of our local homeless population?
Yeah, it varies. I mean, we have pretty much all walks of life.
Claudia, Mayor, sorry. I apologize. We have so many phone conversations where we call each other by first name.
I think Kevin started it.
In the point-time count, I believe that the 80% of the makeup of our homeless population was white. I do not recall the others, but I can, you know, if you give me a minute, I can pull it up if you, if you'd like a answer to.
Sure. That's always helpful. Thank you. Let's see. And then you mentioned the out-of-town transient homeless. We normally try to get them back to where they came from with family and so forth, right? Sometimes we give them tickets, correct?
Correct.
And, and how long did you say do they stay when, when they're in the area?
It could range from a day to about a week or two.
Okay. Very good. All right. Mayor Potem Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick question. Since, something that Councilmember Adam said earlier sparked a question in my mind. Since we are looking at a, a shelter plus a transitional housing-type facility, I'm curious as to how successful was our Project Room Key and how successful are some of the other programs within the county in, in giving those wraparound services that will help bring people from the street back to the community?
Yes. I don't have the numbers with me for Project Room Key, but I know in Thousand Oaks, we have housed about 10 of the individuals that have come in. And some of that is directly related to housing resources. We've had a lot more luck in West County because we've had new supportive housing developments come online during the time of Project Room Key. We still have, I believe, 68 or 70 persons total that are placed in Thousand Oaks. The funding for Project Room Key is expected to be available through the end of September, and we're looking at both the state budget and other resources to try to extend that to give us opportunities to leverage some of the housing opportunities.
I, I think, I'm not really looking for numbers per se, but was it successful in bringing people off the street and, and housing them? Were, did you have any problem getting people to come from the street to those locations?
In Ventura County, we did not. We actually received a lot of kudos from the state because we were able to quickly stand up, thanks to our Office of Emergency Services with the county, you know, Secure4 Partner Motels. And because of our coordinated entry system and our coordination among all of our service providers, we were able to quickly identify those eligible persons and bring them in. And we did not, some other communities did have reluctance to come indoors, but we did not. And we've seen a lot of success in transitioning people to more permanent and supportive environments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So there really isn't any action needed for tonight. It is more of an informational report. We do have several public speakers on this. So now that I think we got all of the questions out from council, I can start calling the individual speakers. We do have Amy Silver, followed by Frank Shallow, former mayor Frank Shallow and former supervisor Frank Shallow, Sister Lisa McGaffin, Tim McDougall, DeShaw Harris, and then finally, Rick Schrader with Many Mansions. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Amy Silver. I live here in Thousand Oaks. And I'm here in support of your proposed Project Home Key solution to help develop emerging, rather, emergency sheltering and permanent supportive housing as a potential humane solution in response to our growing homelessness problem in our community. I believe that Project Home Key would build upon the great work performed by Many Mansions over the past 40-plus years. Many Mansion was originally conceived by members of local churches, temples, and businesses in conjunction with the City of To. Many Mansion provides life-enriching programs for children, adults, and families. I personally have participated in their after-school tutoring homework club, working with school-aged children. I believe that Many Mansions has built first-class affordable housing in our community and also surrounding areas. And you, you probably have already heard that they, in 2020, they received two very prestigious awards. They were named Developer of the Year by the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing and was recognized for their Ormond Beach Villas Project, for the Beyond LA Project of the Year. And Ormond Beach Villas was built to provide affordable housing for homeless veterans and their families. It's a beautiful facility down there. And I think that Project Home Key would be the next big achievement of the City of Thousand Oaks if you chose to go that route. So I really would like you to consider approving this worthwhile project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Shallow, followed by Sister McGaffin.
Thank you very much. My name's Frank Shallow, 50, 50 years this year, member of the community. Madam Mayor and council members, I compliment you on your staff to start off with the City Manager Powers and, and Assistant City Manager Hardy for a good, common sense approach to solving the housing problem in Thousand Oaks. But at, at, I've been thinking about this quite some time, and you're, duressing it now, you've been asking some really good questions about what's going on here locally. And I think you now realize how serious this problem is and how complicated it is. And that's, that's why I think we can help. We being a group of people that want to, want to support you as, in the decision-making processes you go through to solve this problem. So I'm, tonight I'm announcing the beginning formation of an organization to be known as the Coalition for the Homeless. And this loose, umbrella organization will include individuals, businesses, churches, temples, synagogues, and interested nonprofit organizations. Its function will be to support your actions in this homeless matter. That's simply what we're here to do, going to be doing. We plan on convening, first meeting in early fall. And we ask that all interested parties in the coalition should send them their contact information to Ingrid Hardy from Assistant City Manager of the City of Thousand Oaks. And if they want to, email her, it's ihardy@tooaks.org. And we've already contacted a lot of these organizations, these people and organizations, and we're in the process of waiting for responses back. So that's, that's basically my report. And we're going to work together and, and hope that we can do, do the, the community support for your decisions. Any, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Hi, Frank. Glad to see you.
Good to see you, too.
I'd already questioned, but I think it's a wonderful idea. And I love the spirit that you're demonstrating here. And I hope it will be a guide to other people in the community, and many people will join with you. And you're giving the impression, and I hope the community sees it that way, that this is a problem we could all work together on. And one for all and all for one. And, and I love what you're doing. So, good wishes.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. And good luck to all of you also.
Thank you, Mr. Shallow. It's great that after half a century of being a member of this community, you haven't lost your passion about what you care the most, which is to house low-income people and to help the homeless and so many other causes for which you're cheering. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Sister McGaffin? And then to- Sister McGaffin, and then Tim McDougall, and then DeShel Harris.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Peña and councilmembers. My name is Sister Lisa McGaffin. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm privileged to be a Many Mansions board member since 1995. And I'm also honored to follow Frank Schillo, who is the founder of Many Mansions. So thanks to Frank, and thanks to all of you, especially thanks to all the councilmembers over the years that have given so much support to Many Mansions. Indeed, it is interesting to note that as of this past April, you voted unanimously to elevate inclusion from nearly the bottom of the city's top 10 priorities for the next fiscal year to the number-one slot. Your awareness of our social need to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity is truly commendable. To review, you defined the city's goal to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community regardless of race, color, ethnicity, religion, sex, physical or mental ability, sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, age, language, education, and/or socioeconomic status. So I'd like to call out a couple of phrases there. Equitable community regardless of physical or mental disability and regardless of socioeconomic status. I'm here tonight representing the hundreds of homeless individuals who live on our streets or hillsides, in their cars, or around somewhat-empty shopping centers. I'm here to make sure that they have a voice, that they are included in your deliberations. I encourage you to demonstrate consistent political will. That consistent political will to translate words about inclusion into action. The consistent political will to demonstrate the concern of our community for those who find themselves tossed to the margins. And finally, the consistent political will to develop more permanent supportive housing as well as emergency housing for homeless individuals. And so I strongly endorse your staff's recommendation to seek a developer, owner, operator, and to identify a location for the acquisition and conversion of an existing building for both permanent supportive housing and emergency shelter. I encourage you to move forward as expeditiously as possible on behalf of our homeless brothers and sisters, especially the children. Thank you.
This warranted an applause. Indeed, thank you. That was beautifully said, Sister Lisa. Tim McDougall is next, followed by DeShel Harris, and our last speaker will be Rick Schrader.
Really not sure how to follow that. Thank you very much. I think you covered it all. And there's so much talent in this community. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Tim McDougall. I am a resident of Newberry Park. And we recognize the homeless problem. We've done a lot of research. People are really committed to making a difference, and we can do that. And with the support that I'm asking you to put with this initiative that's before us, we can make a lot of changes and help some people that really need it. I am a member of the Many Mansions Real Estate Alliance. Every time I sell a home, I make a contribution to the wonderful work that they are doing in our community. And I hope that we can expand in a fair way to include those people. And I just believe that you all want the same thing. So thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. DeShel Harris, followed by Rick Schrader.
Hello, everyone. I'm DeShel Harris, Area Director with Lutheran Social Services over here in Thousand Oaks on 80 East Hillcrest. So today, a man came to our door and said, "I just got released from the hospital, and I have no place to go. Where can you tell me to go? Where can I stay?" This is a story that we often hear. This is something that often happens. We have people come to our doors almost every day requesting shelter or housing. So I am here to support emergency housing, emergency shelter provided through Many Mansions. We may have a temporary shelter program during the months of November to March, but there are seven months out of the year where we don't have a place for people to sleep at night. One thing that we have noticed is we have placed people in Project Room Key. We have placed people through, at Motel 6, through city funding, and we've seen so much progress once they have a stable place to stay, a stable place to put their items and not worry about moving from this encampment or this park or this, wherever it may be, right? I will say that the nearest shelter is in Oxnard, and we are doing exactly what we don't want other cities to do. We are sending our homeless neighbors, our homeless residents, to other cities for shelter. But the vast majority of the people that we serve are from the City of Thousand Oaks. Something that we also know as homeless service providers is that Housing First does work. There's a lot of research on, you stabilize a person first, and then you work on mental health services, then you work on addiction treatment, right? Because if you're in survival mode, you're worried about where you're going to sleep the next day, what you're going to eat, where you're going to go, right? You're not thinking about the next step of your life. You're not thinking about work. It's a full-time job just moving your stuff from one park, one encampment, one business, every single day, right? We see a lot of people that come to us who are like, they come to us and they say, "Where can I sleep tomorrow? Where can I put my stuff? Where can I park?" Right? Another thing I want us to keep in mind is, the people that we serve, they're not just people who are living in encampments. They're mothers living in vehicles with their children. They're people who are so sick, they have these major hospital bills, and they cannot afford to pay rent, and they're going to be disabled for the rest of their lives. There are many faces to homelessness. It is not just the people that you see in encampments and the people that you see on your street every day. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Rick Schrader is our last speaker. Good evening. The Executive Director of Many Mansions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, members of city staff. I am Rick Schrader, President of Many Mansions. Many Mansions is a nonprofit, affordable housing developer, manager, and service provider. As Sister Lisa mentioned, we were founded here in Thousand Oaks by Frank Schillo 42 years ago, but also many concerned citizens in this community wanting to do something about affordable housing. We now own and operate 16 affordable housing communities throughout the Ventura County with over 1,400 residents, and we have another 10 affordable housing projects in development in Ventura in Los Angeles. We are the largest supportive housing provider in Ventura County. And it's supportive housing, that's affordable housing with onsite services for those persons and families who are homeless. And those onsite services are services for job development, mental health counseling, drug addiction as well. And we also strongly support the city staff's recommendation to find a permanent location for more permanent supportive housing and an emergency shelter. We need more permanent supportive housing in the city. There is a huge waiting list for such housing. Yet every year, we place relatively few people into our supportive housing. And as a result, people remain homeless and continue to live on the streets or in cars or encampments. And most of the people that we do place are local people. We need permanent emergency shelter housing also. Now, emergency shelters are now called bridge housing. And I think the name is very appropriate since emergency shelter, since bridge housing, is that needed bridge from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. Housing that's affordable, that's permanent, and it has those onsite services. Now, our existing rotating shelter is really not adequate for today's challenges. I do applaud, though, the countless volunteers and churches and synagogues who have run this program. But I think we can do better. That permanent bridge housing would be open year-round. It would provide more, assist more people. It would be staffed by professionals, which could provide a variety of services. It would better assist individuals and families looking for permanent housing, and it's more likely to actually have women and children use that housing. So the city has an enormous opportunity coming out of this pandemic to address one of its most important issues facing this community. There's more government financing available. I think there's a greater awareness of homelessness, and there's a more desire by communities to do their share in addressing a situation that really no individual or family should have to face. So thank you, and I would urge you to take this action.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. To all of our public speakers, obviously, this is a very important topic. We, all five councilmembers, care very deeply about this. We are indeed passionate about this subject, each and every one of us. This item was initially going to be called at the very end of this council meeting, but because I felt that it is so important, I moved it up because of the fact that we need people to be aware of our homeless situation in our city. So there is no really action that is required by the council other than to approve the direction with the RFQ and the Five-Year Homeless Plan. So the city attorney advises me that there is no vote required.
That's correct. You're just receiving the report.
And I will just remind the council that the Ad Hoc Committee will be returning to the city council with an update as to the results of that process.
Indeed. Mayor Potem Angler and I will do that for you. All right.
Madam Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. You asked about the ethnic and racial makeup. So I just wanted to get back to you. From our 2020 point-in-time count, for ethnicity, 13% are Hispanic or Latino. And the racial makeup, 86% white, 4.6% unknown, 3.7 multiple races or others, 2.8% African-American or black, and less than 1% for American Indian or Alaska Native, less than 1% for Asian, and less than 1% for native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander.
Thank you so much. I think that is an important statistic. I appreciate that. I want to thank all of our advocates for homelessness and low-income housing and support services, Ventura County Representative, and especially also our deputies, Deputy Cordova and Richter. Really appreciate it. And we will now move on to our next item, which is going to be 8C, another very important item. It deals with our mobile home units, mobile homes that we have in the City of Thousand Oaks. We have many residents in attendance, so we are going to call our public hearings later on. Next up will be rent control and the item 8C. It is a municipal code amendment, and that will be presented, oh, that is a public hearing, actually, yes. My apologies. So I'm going to ask our clerk to open the public hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8C Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2021-70174, Comprehensive Amendment to Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance, Dissolution of Rent Adjustment Commission, Adoption and Rescinding of Related Resolutions. Speakers are requested to state your name and community of residence for the record. 10 individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have four minutes.
Thank you very much. And starting off the discussion and presentation will be our Community Development Director, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. This agenda item tonight focuses on proposed amendments to the city's rent stabilization ordinance. Due to the expiration of the moratorium on just and reasonable return applications, staff evaluated the ordinance and are proposing some minor updates to conform with state law and other minor amendments. It's also important to note that rent control in mobile home parks will continue, and the item you are considering is procedural in nature, to be one, as we've mentioned, compliant with state law, and to provide a venue through the Planning Commission for impartial future adjustments to be heard. Currently, there are no applications that are known to be pending to utilize this ordinance. And with that said, I'll turn the floor over to Kari Finley, our Planning Manager, who'll provide a brief overview of the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. With me also this evening, we have Lynn Oshida, the Community Development Director Analyst, and also Felicia Liverman, who have all helped work on this ordinance amendment.
Excuse me, could you speak just a little louder, please?
Yes, so the request before you this evening is to approve proposed amendments to the ordinance and adopt two related resolutions that support the proposed ordinance amendments. The main purposes of the city's mobile home rent stabilization ordinance are twofold: to protect renters from excessive rent increases and to provide landlords with reasonable return on their rental spaces. The ordinance also provides procedures for requesting rent increases with opportunities for renters to participate in the process. The proposed ordinance upholds these purposes. The city has regulated rents in mobile home parks since 1980. Currently, there are eight mobile home parks in the city, five of which are reserved for seniors, with the remaining three for families. Due to several requests by landlords to increase rents in 2010 and 2011, a mediated agreement between park owners, tenants, and the city was conducted. The result of the mediation provided the park owners and tenants defined rent increases for just and reasonable return over a 10-year period and a moratorium on new applications over the same period. In addition, the tenants agreed not to sue the city over those increases. The existing ordinance was adopted in 2011 based on the mediated agreement. The mediated provisions, including the moratorium, expire on August 18th of this year. Once the moratorium expires, owners will once again be able to apply for just and reasonable return rate increases. Key components of the ordinance are listed on this slide. The three types of rent increases that exist in the current ordinance and are not proposed to change include, one, an automatic annual adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index, adjustments for capital improvements and rehabilitation work that are administratively processed with an application to the Community Development Department, and the third are the applications for just and reasonable return that would be reviewed by an assigned hearing body.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that third one. What was that?
Those are the applications for just and reasonable return that would be reviewed by an assigned hearing body. No significant changes to the types of rent increases are being proposed. Because the ordinance has not been updated since the 2011 negotiations, several changes to state law have taken place that govern mobile home rent control. Thus, minor updates are proposed to comply with current state law, such as updating definitions, for example. Also, as mentioned, the moratorium is expiring. References to specific dates and the moratorium are found in several sections of the ordinance. After August 18th, those references will no longer be valid and are proposed to be deleted. Another reason for the update is to re-sign the Planning Commission as the hearing authority on just and reasonable return applications. The existing ordinance establishes the Rent Adjustment Commission, or the RAC, to review just and reasonable return applications. The RAC serves at the pleasure of the city council. However, due to the moratorium on these applications, the RAC has not convened in 10 years and would need to be reestablished and trained. Maintaining any city commission entails advertising, reviewing application and interviews, and then appointment by the city council. No recent inquiries have been received by the city regarding just and reasonable return. And since we have no idea if or when these applications might be submitted, it's difficult to maintain a commission for infrequent and unpredictable applications and process them in a timely manner. in a timely manner. The Planning Commission is an already established entity that operates under established procedures, rules, and regulations similar to what is required for rent adjustment request hearings. The Planning Commission represents an unbiased and trained hearing authority capable of hearing these cases. Other cities, including Simi Valley, use a Planning Commission for these types of hearings. Before I conclude, I want to note that staff sent letters to all eight mobile home park owners and each tenant in the parks with a summary of the proposed changes and notice of this hearing. A hearing notice was also published in accordance with state law. Several email correspondence have been received and were forwarded to the council. At this time, staff received and responded to eight emails and four telephone calls. And then additional correspondence was forwarded to council this evening in a supplemental In summary, the ordinance amendments being proposed are to comply with changes to state law and reassign duties of the RAC to the Planning Commission. No other significant changes are proposed. Staff recommendations for approval are shown on this slide and included in the staff report. And staff is here and available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. Appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Parker. We do have, as you heard, several speakers and, and the emails that were forwarded in the supplemental packet. There are quite a few emails in here and quite a few questions. I was wondering if staff could address these questions, perhaps after we hear from the public speakers, questions posed by residents from mobile home parks. Before I go to the speakers, are there any questions from council? None? Okay. Then I will call on the first speaker. Haven't seen you in quite a while, Mike. Mike Moore is first, followed by Mr. Sanchez Castro, Jill Martinez, Jill Nani. So, if you could all make your way down to the podium, the names I just called, that would be great. So, Mr. Moore is first, Castro is second, Martinez, third, and fourth is Nani. Good evening.
Can I get my glasses on here? Good evening, y'all. I'm Mike Moore, and I happen to live in Twin Palms Mobile Home Park. Our family moved to Thousand Oaks in 1961, so it has been 60 years I've been in this amazing city. I don't know what is going on with the city council. For years, I thought you were behind the little guy who didn't have it as good as you all. You have taken a completely different direction over the past years. It seems you are more concerned about your pocketbooks than the people of this great town. Claudia, you at one time strongly backed the mobile homeowners in the city. Now, I have a huge question mark about you. I would ask you and the rest of the city council to please support our mobile homeowners and give us every possible break you can. You are not, we are not, as mobile homeowners, a wealthy group of people. A huge portion of us are on fixed incomes. This means we don't get annual wage, wage increases. Thank you.
My name is Herman Castro. I'm coming representing my mother, who lives in mobile homes. I just listened to you guys and after hearing that homeless problem that we have, I think, why do not put more attention under item two, this recommendation to eliminate RAC number three and RAC 07, which is working for these people who live in the mobile homes up to the moment? If we remove the rent control that they have right now, there will be perspectives that in the future, or very near future, the rent will increase for them to levels that they cannot afford. That's all I can say. Thank you for your time.
Before, before, before we call on Jill Martinez, the city attorney would like to say something.
I just want to be clear with everyone. What the city council is doing tonight is not eliminating the Mobile Home Rent Control Stabilization Ordinance. That will remain in place. It is not being rescinded. It is not being repealed. As rent control exists today, it will exist if the city council adopts this new ordinance. What this ordinance is doing is two things. First, it is just making minor adjustments to language in the rent control ordinance to comply with state law. The second thing it's doing is it's basically having the Planning Commission be the hearing body, rather than a separate committee be the hearing body. That's the only thing that this ordinance is doing. Rent control for mobile home parks will remain just as it has since 1980.
Thank you. I got a couple of phone calls from mobile home residents, and I explained that we're not getting rid of the ordinance itself. We're just merely, as the city attorney stated, moving the decision-making body to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. That is all that is happening. So, there, we're not getting rid of any rent control ordinance at all. So, you are still protected. Just wanted to make that clear. Mr. Adam, did you want?
Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been on this council now for almost nine years, and I have to tell you that there's no more ardent supporter of mobile homes and the folks that live in them than our mayor. All right?
Hallelujah.
Period. And I, I can attest to that fact because she converted me into an ardent supporter many years ago. And the two of us have been very forthright in our support for mobile homes, particularly Ranch Mobile Home Park, haven't we, Claudia? We understand that this is a well of affordable housing in the city that we, is very important that we maintain. It houses hundreds of people. Claudia and I have visited many of the mobile homes. We've seen the residents there. We've steered funds to the mobile home parks through our Community Development Block Grants and through our, what's our other one? Our?
CDBG, and the Community Endowment.
It can do, Community Endowment, for hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, please, understand that. And as the city attorney says, nothing's changing with rent, rent control tonight. This is merely a procedural act that we have to do because the other one expired. So, rest comfortably. Nothing's changing when it comes to rent control in the city for our mobile home parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Adam.
One other thing I did want to mention is, with respect to the questions on why are, why is staff suggesting that the Planning Commission be the hearing body rather than creating another separate independent commission? There's, there's a lot of reasons for that, primarily as expressed by the city staff. Our Planning Commission, just as another committee, are appointed by the city council members. They are, they meet regularly, unlike this, the rent adjustment commission that had met previously. It's been over 10 years since the rent adjustment commission has met. And even prior to that, they met very infrequently. So, there's very strict timelines on processing a potential rent adjustment application. And in that very short period of time, we would recruit, you know, appoint and train a, a separate body of individuals to hear complex information. But while we have a Planning Commission that regularly hears very complex information, they are well-versed in due process rights because a hearing under that, under those circumstances, due process comes into play. The mobile home park owners have due process rights, and the mobile home park, the mobile homeowners also have due process rights. The Planning Commission is well-versed in that because they are expected to be unbiased and have an understanding of the procedural and substantive due process rights that everyone is afforded. Whereas a, appointing a new body, they would not have that experience. So, from our perspective, it was logical to have the Planning Commission be the decision-making body. But again, their decision is not going to be any different than what it exists right now had the, if the city council chooses to have the rent control adjustment board separately. I think you had a question?
No, just, just a comment along the same lines. When this first came to us, I know that I, for one, spoke with the city, city staff and was very concerned that we were not going to be changing any of the protections that are in for our residents and a very important part of our housing stock. That is, was one of the things that was primary in my mind. I've been assured by staff, and you've heard them tonight, that the only thing really we are changing is the body which hears these requests for the, the third type of, of adjustments. Thank you. Our Planning Commission is a group of people who meet on a regular basis and who are well-versed in land use. So, I, I feel comfortable.
We, we are going to call on Jill Martinez and the rest of the speakers. Just wanted to clarify that there is no action tonight that will eliminate rent control for mobile homeowners at all. Ms. Martinez, followed by Jill Nani, and then Carol Claussen.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I've had the opportunity to speak with a couple of you. I am Reverend Jill Martinez. I am a minister with the Presbyterian Church USA and have been working in affordable housing for a number of years. Right now, I come before you as a representative from GSMOL, the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League, that's very much involved with the MRL, the, the legal, our legal rights. I live in Ventura. I live in Buena Ventura Mobile Home Park, and I've been, I'm assistant manager for the Central Coast in the three-county area. So, I've been working with a lot of different mobile homes, from Ojai to Thousand Oaks and so on. People from Casitas are even calling me now. This is very serious. We are going to point out a number of things to you today that are substantive. There is one global issue that I want to address, and then the GSMOL attorney is coming in electronically to clarify and clean up any mistakes we made as we share with you. My global concern, which I did have an opportunity to share with staff, again, I hear landlord/tenant, landlord/tenant. That is not the issue, and it's a great big concern if you have people making decisions about people living in mobile home parks that are not familiar with MRL, and that they have a whole language that they need to understand and comprehend. The RAC, of course, has at least two mobile home, homeowners. The, the issue is, as I look at your ordinance, I have asked that, beginning with the first page, second paragraph, I believe it is, and just there out, every place it says tenant, it needs to be changed to homeowner. And this is a partnership between landowners and homeowners. The homeowners own more of the park than the landowner. So, when you talk about fair return and protecting your asset, it's not just what a landowner can get, but the research is in, and every $100 our rent is raised, we lose the value of our homes by $10,000. So, our return for our investment needs to be taken seriously as well. However this works out with the Planning Commission or not, I don't know what access the Planning Commissioners have to mobile home living or the law, but it is, it is significant. And so, consider this as a partnership. There are two owners. There's a landowner, and there are homeowners. That language needs to be changed in the, in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Nani is next, followed by Carol Claussen, and then Laura Bjorkland.
Mayor Bill De La Peña, I really appreciate you prioritizing us. Thank you. Okay. My name is Jill Nani, and I live in Twin Palms Mobile Home Park on 198 North Skyline Drive here in Thousand Oaks. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I oppose the repeal of Chapter 25 of the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Ordinance, and request that all provisions in Chapter 25 of the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Act remain in effect moving forward. I advocate the continuance of the provision in the current ordinance that states rent increases are assessed at 100% of CPI with a cap of 7%. According to the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners, Homeowners League lawyer, Bruce Staton, 22 mobile home ordinances in the state of California include caps on all rent increases determined by CPI. In 2021, the CPI has increased rapidly from 1.4 in January to 5 in May. Maintaining the current necessary 7% cap protects mobile home park homeowners from runaway inflation. I oppose the dismantling of the RAC. Is that, is that the proper pronunciation? Thank you. I oppose the dismantling of the RAC and the folding of their duties into the City Planning Commission. The RAC is composed of two mobile home park representatives, two mobile home park tenants, and one member who belongs to neither of these categories, a neutral individual. The RAC is a rent adjustment commission that acts on the behalf of mobile home park homeowners, and I advocate the retention of this most necessary commission. In respect to appeal ability, I would like the city council to hear all of our appeals, including appeals that include capital improvements, as opposed to the city planning commission or city, city planning commission manager making unilateral decisions by his or her sole self. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Carol Claussen next, followed by Laura Bjorkland.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you wonderful city council members. I have lived in Thousand Oaks since 1976. And Ed Jones, you and I go way back. So, I appreciate being here. I've been a resident of Ranch Mobile Home Park for 10 years now, and I love that sweet little place, and I love what you have helped us with, Claudia. Thank you. I had an opportunity to speak with a dear friend who's a lobbyist in Sacramento, and I said, Doug, I need your help. I have a problem here at the mobile home park with, you know, things aren't getting taken care of. And he, he explained to me what he did as the manufact, Western Manufactured Mobile Home Association that he was a lobbyist for, and he said, we represent the park owner. And all of the things that have happened in the 10 years that I've been there trying to figure out how the system is, I've realized that there's not anyone that represents the residents, the owners of the actual mobile homes. And so, one of the things that just happened recently, and we're going to be getting a rent increase, and it's, you know, I understand the park owners want a reasonable and fair increase in the rent and stuff, but we've got streets with gaps and holes in them that are so dangerous at Ranch that when I see some lady in a walker, or a man in a walker walking around, I go out and tell them, do not walk on the streets. It's not safe. It is so dangerous. The place is a shambles. It's not being taken care of. Our, our park owner doesn't even help our manager take care of the park. We've had a light-out for two years out in the street. And the other thing, I've, I've given 200 photos so far of the situation, of the street situation. I've called the city and found out, oh, that's not the city. You have to call HCD in Riverside. So, it's, it's just a real convoluted, interesting governmental bureaucracy that we are sort of caught between, that I see. And we have, I just lost my train of thought in all my notes. But that's, that's the issue I wanted to bring, is that I'm hoping to join our, the parks around here so that I have a database of we know who we are, and we can help each other. And just standing out in the lobby was wonderful, seeing people and trying to connect and meet them, because we don't have anybody connecting us and supporting our side of things. So, thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it.
Next speaker is Laura Bjorkland, followed by Victor Abruzzo, and then Kimon Juarez.
Hi, good evening. I'm Laura Bjorkland. I live with my mom at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. I've lived there for nine years, and I have to say I'm And I have to say I'm new at this, and I've been noticing the last year of, just as Carol and Jill Martinez were saying, there's just been some injustices there and fear among the manager. And I appreciate Tracy Noonan and Claudia, our mayor, for stating why we're here today that our rent is not going to be increased. It's terminology in the paperwork, and that is really important because there's two pages of that terminology that I did not understand. I'm a college person, and the lingo was a little convoluted. So if that could ever be changed in the future would be really wonderful. And I won't keep you, but I just feel like it'd be nice to be recognized as homeowners instead of renters. The seniors worked really hard to become renters, and I think that particular verbiage should probably be changed. There is no upkeep of the property. As Carol was saying, there are big, huge potholes. I've actually stepped in it and twisted my leg, and nothing's been done about it. I've taken pictures and they don't seem to know to get tarp to fix it. So just with those little things in mind, everyone is on a fixed income there, and I support all the seniors that are there and my mom. And I want to thank you for your time and everyone being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next we have Victor. Victor, good to see you again. And then after Victor, we have Kimon Juarez and then Marvin Sanders. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I want to thank you kindly. My name is Victor Abruzzo. I live in the Glenwood Park area, but I have been associated with at least Ranch Mobile Home Park for at least the last 12 years. You should have before you a four-page note that I prepared to save you listening to my rambling, but just a few rambling thoughts, if I may. Many of the comments suggest that senior citizens, homeowners are objecting to changes because they don't understand the changes. I indeed agree that unless we understand what changes are being made and what import they have, there is going to be a resistance to change. I listened to your staff member talk about reasonable rate of return, and I have very vivid memories of you folks trying to create financials so that the property owner could justify a rate of return that was much more commensurate with a business venture than a mobile home park for identified low-income senior citizens. You may recall that at least with respect to Ranch Mobile Home Park, that it does not comport with the space and other design requirements laid out in the code, the California regulations and particularly 25 CCR 1110. It was presumably allowed as a cramped, contained space in order to have cramped, contained rent, and that has not consistently been the case. Two of the previous speakers have spoken about the lack of maintenance on those properties because the HCD standard provides that the property code enforcement is done by folks in Riverside in a fact that's not been done. And your staff code enforcement folks maintain that it is not their job. I would ask you if you are going to take more responsibility for the relationship between the landowners and the homeowners and what is due to each, that you ought to know more about the quality of the maintenance of the properties. When the esteemed Mr. Fox led us down the path with his proposed safeguards, we found that the landowners were going to be protected for all of their required investment out of Ojai's, and yet we do not see the improvement forthcoming. More importantly, there was never a base where you established just how poorly maintained those properties were before you decided to let them compensate themselves for further improvements. I've outlined most of these in that four pages. I am suggesting to you that we need to have a better understanding of what is to be expected, what is the policy, what does that staff member mean for a reasonable rate of return, and why should that apply, if at all, to Ranch Mobile Home Park or any other park? I would suggest to you that you very much need to get whatever organization you put in control of rent and make sure they start out with policies that make sure they identify the deficiencies that exist now before we start allowing recoupment of investment in properties.
Thank you.
For all of those reasons, I hope we have more conversation.
I think Councilmember Jones has a question for you, Mr. Abruzzo.
Yes, Mr. Abruzzo, what is your opinion of the current board, the RAC? Is that what they called it?
RAC, to the best of my knowledge, has not been active for the last 10 years.
So I mean, what do you, my question is, do you have any concern about changing that to the planning commission?
Your decision to move the function to the planning commission means that a group of people who have not dealt with the relationship between the homeowners and landowners are now going to step into that morass. If they are prepared to deal with maintenance of net operating income, responsibilities for the underlying lack of maintenance for these past 10 years, it would be a joy to deal with them. But until I know, and I think until the rest of these people know, what is it they intend to do to gain an understanding of the current situation, we are scared of the possibilities of a rate of return commensurate with Amgen or somebody else.
Well, is your understanding the RAC has that level of understanding right now?
Again, I don't know that there's been a RAC in existence for more than a decade. As far as rates of return, the statute that the city has allows percentages, and so far we have not dealt with recovery of capital improvements, which I think is an issue which, excuse me, which the planning commission may learn about, but certainly is not something in their boathouse at this point.
Somebody said earlier that the current RAC has representatives that represent two different areas.
Again, when RAC operated more than a decade ago, it had representatives from the mobile home community, and we could address issues that they knew about. Hasn't happened for 10 years.
Okay, well, that didn't answer my question, but finally, what does a tenant, not a tenant, I agree with you, homeowner.
Homeowner, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think we ought to change that, Mayor, to homeowner. I really, I think we ought to. These people own their homes that are sitting on somebody else's ground.
These people have invested in homes in the hope that they would be protected from the vagaries of inflation and the greed of some property owners.
Yeah. Finally, what is the current remedy that the homeowners have if the owner lets the place run down? What can they do? Do they go to the RAC to complain? Do they come here?
Again, there is no RAC. The way that statutory provisions are created in this state.
Oh, there currently isn't a RAC. Is that?
There is no RAC. It hasn't been a RAC in 10 years.
Okay, well, I thought they just hadn't met for 10 years. Pardon me, I misunderstood. I thought they were kind of a lazy RAC, you know.
My RAC is a lazy RAC, but thank you. I would suggest to you, sir, that the issue is, as I said before, code enforcement allegedly comes from Riverside, and it comes rarely, if at all. And so we need local code enforcement unless somebody is going to tell you a different story.
And you could get that here? You're asking for it by the city council?
I am addressing myself to the honorable mayor of this town and the rest of the city council who have not taken the initiative of allowing code enforcement to be conducted in this city by city employees.
Well, let me just ask, I'm through with you. I mean, thank you. I appreciate all you said. I didn't mean to be so abrupt. I'd just like to ask the city attorney, do we have the ability to do that?
Unfortunately, we do not. We are preempted by state law. State law completely controls all infrastructure, housing suitability issues associated with mobile home parks, and we are completely preempted from any local code enforcement actions against mobile home park landowners. So we cannot, we are preempted by it, just as I can't enforce violations of the IRS tax code or, you know, or the penal code. We have no jurisdiction over that.
Meaning you know disrespect, Madam Counsel? I believe there are different opinions in that regard.
Well, thank you.
And if you have no questions of me, I'm sure I've done my time.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for the question.
All right, we have a question from Councilmember Al Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to be clear, the rental adjustment commission does not exist at this point, correct? Ms. Noonan?
That's correct.
Okay, and it hasn't existed for 10 years, correct?
Right.
And it hasn't met in 10 years?
Correct.
And we haven't had a, a.
A rent adjustment.
Just-in-reasonable-return hearing in 10 years, correct?
Well over 10 years.
Well over 10 years.
Yeah, because I think the mediated agreement occurred in 2011.
Okay.
And so the application was, I think, in 2010.
So I would say that's a pretty good indication of rent control is pretty strong here in the city of Thousand Oaks. But the issue this evening, unlike the gentleman there seemingly trying to make, is not the maintenance of the mobile home parks. That's not the issue, and we are sympathetic to that. And that's why we pump, as I mentioned, hundreds of thousands of dollars in different funds to keep these parks maintained. The issue tonight is simply that we have to appoint a body to hear any of these potential just-in-reasonable hearings, which we haven't heard in 10 years, and I don't know if I anticipate hearing any in the future, but it seems to me that the planning commission would be eminently suited to do that. It's five neutral people that would listen to this situation. I mean, if we reinstituted the RAC, there would be a learning curve for them, just as there might be for the planning commission. And of course, anybody can come before the planning commission, just as you're doing right now, and plead your case and make any remarks that you'd want to make. It's a public, transparent hearing.
Can I call the next speaker?
Certainly.
Kimon Juarez.
By all means.
Thank you, thank you. Kimon Juarez, followed by Marvin Sanders and Bruce Stanton.
Hello, my name is Kimon Juarez, and I do reside in Twin Palms Mobile Home Park. I was not aware that RAC did not exist. I was aware that it didn't meet in 10 years. I do support the re-establishment of RAC in that case. I think that RAC, the way it was designed previously, is more suited for our needs as opposed to the city's planning commission. So if the city's planning commission is going to be on a learning curve and a new establish of RAC would be on a new learning curve, what's the difference? And we should compose the RAC, the new RAC, the same way the old RAC was constructed. So I do still oppose the dismantlement of RAC or the, if you would call it that. I would also like to see Chapter 25 before the revision in 2011 reinstated where in Section 5-25.02, Paragraph 4, index means the figure employed when determining allowable rent increases under Section 5-25.05 and shall be calculated by taking 75% of the Los Angeles Long Beach Anaheim Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the year ending April 1st, rounded to the nearest 10th. No index in the excess of 7% shall be employed. I would like to see that reinstated. I don't think at this time, in the era we're facing post-pandemic with rapidly increasing inflation, there is a place for mobile homeowners, your typical mobile homeowner, to pay 100% of the CPI as it keeps growing and growing and growing, and we see no stop to that. As far as our mobile home property is being maintained, I can tell you that they're not. Our mobile home park is infested with vermin. We've brought this to the manager's attention many times. He does nothing. He says that if he brings it to MZL, the property manager, he's in danger of being fired. I've contracted Lyme disease. I do believe, based on good evidence, I contracted it from Twin Palms Mobile Home Park. We are infested with the white-footed mouse, which carries Lyme disease, and I've become very sick as a result of it. There are unlocked electrical panels that children can get into and electrocute themselves. Just like Ranch Mobile Home Park, we have deep holes that the disabled can easily and have fallen into. Going forward, that was my main concern, opposing that. We also want our appeal ability to go with the city councils for all issues, including capital improvements. We don't think that any one person should hear any appeal, including capital improvements. It should be a body of the city council that votes on it. And that's all I have to say for today. I really appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next last two speakers are Marvin Sanders and then Bruce Stanton. Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, council members. I'm Marvin Sanders. I live at Ranch Mobile Home Park. It's, I own there. I'm the young gun. I'm 61 years old. Most of the people there are 85, 95, and, you know, they are our greatest. Pardon?
Stop this on age, okay?
They are our greatest generation, but, yes. I love where I live. It is tragic, the conditions there. I know that you guys have stated that you have no enforcement abilities, but it's a 30-second drive. I would recommend that you guys drive over and look at the conditions there. They're, I'm not talking about potholes. They're trenches, three inches wide, two inches deep, four inches deep. Someone can get hurt in there. Once again, you don't have enforcement abilities, that's been stated, but you do have perception abilities and that, you know, governing bodies do have some force that you can use. I can afford a rate, a rent increase. I'm still working. I'm, you know, I'm, once again, the young gun. There are a lot of people that are on assistance that are counting on churches for food, and rent increases will bring them to what you guys were excited about hour ago, and that's the homeless population. And these people don't deserve to be homeless. I'm not going to be homeless. I'm work, I have good work life ahead of me. But ranch is, it's a travesty, the way people have to live there. The RAC, I believe, the new RAC should be the planning commission with some homeowners in it because the planning commission doesn't, they're not boots on the ground. That's not their specialty. That's not their expertise. You need people that live that life and have a practical understanding of the day-to-day paradigm that is functioning there. Yeah, the prices just can't go up. People can't afford it. They really can't afford it. And people right now currently in the ranch are making decisions over medication and meals. And anywhere in America, that's not fair, and it's not right, and it's really not fair or right in Thousand Oaks. This is a pretty prestigious area that we live in. This is a pretty prestigious area that we live in. That's about all I really have to say. I mean, things are tragic. I mean, like I say, I'm not in an everyday mobile home park because of the senior park, but I know it's happening everywhere, and that the owners do not care. They do not, do not care. When I moved in six years ago, there was nice grass, and now there's dirt. We don't have any rodents or anything of that nature, but like I say, it's a 30-second drive. You guys should go over and just take a look. You don't have jurisdiction, but you do have eyes. We need this governing body to help us, help ourselves, and to help the greatest generation. Thank you for your time.
Our last, thank you, our last speaker is Bruce Stanton.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, you're on, oh, there you are. Okay, good evening. I thought you were in the audience. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Bruce Stanton, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the residents of Twin Palms Mobile Home Park. I've been a practicing attorney since 1982, and most of that time has been spent specializing in the representation of mobile home residents throughout California. I'm currently the corporate attorney for the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League, GSML, which is a 55-year-old nonprofit corporation that advocates on behalf of mobile homeowners throughout California. Now, during that time, I've had, to no fault of my own, had to have had extensive experience in connection with drafting, amending, and enforcement of local mobile home rent stabilization ordinances, what we call RSOs. And I've represented residents in probably 50 to 60 administrative rent hearings throughout California since 1986, been involved in numerous state and federal court cases, including a 1992 US Supreme Court case. I've only had since yesterday to review the lengthy staff report and the attachments. I was not involved with the 2011 RSO amendment. I do understand the general need to amend the current ordinance due to the timing out of your 10-year moratorium agreement. I would have liked to see more time for the stakeholder groups, the homeowners or the park owners, to be involved and maybe made a part of this process. We have a time crunch now that I see the council facing with the summer recess schedule ahead of you, and after tonight, I think you only have one more meeting before the revisions would want to be taking place, I guess, around the middle of August. But nevertheless, I would urge you to not act hastily in connection with this important consumer protection statute. It's designed, of course, to preserve affordable, mobile home affordable housing in Thousand Oaks. Instead, I would urge you to allow whatever time might be made available to carefully consider these proposed changes and whether additional changes might be productive. So I'd like to just focus on three issues tonight. First, the automatic adjustment to rents provision. This is going to carry forward, of course, the current 100% of CPI indexing for annual allowable rent increases. Prior to 2011, the ordinance indexed annual adjustments at 75%, which is actually in line with the majority of California jurisdictions that use CPI as an indexing factor in this way. There are 26 of the 47 jurisdictions that use 75%. Another 16 of those jurisdictions index at 100%. But of the combined total of those, at least 26 of those 47 jurisdictions also have some kind of maximum cap on the amount of rent increase. And those caps range from a low of 4% to a maximum of 10%, with the most prevalent caps being in the 7% or 8% area. Your proposed new language does not contain a cap, but I would note that it's not a new concept, because as previously mentioned, there was a cap in place prior to that, prior to the 2011 amendment. So the residents respectfully request that if 100% of CPI is to remain the standard, that a 7% cap be reinstituted due to the very real concerns about inflation, especially in the post-COVID area. Secondly, the ordinance language carries forward the existing language that with respect to capital improvements, the community development manager, or if appealed, the city manager, is the final decision-maker with respect to capital improvements, and that the council has, there's no right of appeal to the council. And I would just say, this creates a lack of parity in the process and places responsibility for what could be an extremely large financial item on one person without you being involved at all. I, I think that we, again, we respectfully request, as has been mentioned, that there should be a right of appeal to the council. And there's a case in Santa Paula
Mr. Stanton, your time, you have run out of time. Can you finish up real quick?
Well, I was also going to speak very quickly about the transition to the Planning Commission. I think that to answer some of the council questions, that the benefit of having park owners and residents on a commission is that they live in and operate the parks, and they know how the parks work. The last thing I was just going to mention is, there is, under the HCD protocols, the ability, if the city wishes, to become a local enforcement agency for Title 25. There's a process to do that, and there's approximately 50 or 60 local jurisdictions that do have enforcement for Title 25, so I thought I'd mention that.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me go over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and so Mr. Stanton was our last speaker. And we are going to, I'd like to go back to staff so that you can address some of the concerns, and then I will go to my council colleagues for your questions and comments. Mr. Parker or Mrs. Finley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there are a number of comments that were made here this evening, so as a team, we'll take turns responding to each. And to start, we're going to go to our attorney who is assisting us, Ms. Lieberman.
Good evening. With respect to the residents who have come forward and asked that the definitions be adjusted to reflect that they're not tenants, but owners of their coaches. When we made these adjustments to the ordinance that's before you tonight, we never changed those definitions from what they had been before. There was no disrespect meant. We just didn't adjust them. We certainly can make a change to the definition of mobile home tenant or resident to change it to mobile home owner/tenant. There's a great many people who live in mobile home parks that own their coaches. There are many who rent their coaches, so not all of them are owners, so it would encompass all of them. So we can make that change. Did you want to address that further or move on to the next?
Move on to the next.
Okay. As far as CPI goes, prior to the mediated agreement that went into effect in 2011, CPI had been capped at 75% of the annual CPI for the annual automatic adjustments. As a result of that mediated agreement, and part of it, in 2018, CPI went to 100%. So the mobile home park residents have been paying 100% CPI since 2018. I would also note that since 1986, the annual CPI adjustment has never gone above 5.5% since 1986. This year, the CPI adjustment for ending March 31st, 2021, is 2.2%. And the range has most, has ranged most between 1.9% to 3.8% in the last five years. There has not been since 1986 anything that has gone above 5.5%, and that was in 1991. Just according to the
We're going to have to let staff continue, please. Thank you.
CPI adjusts every single month. However, we've always calculated, and the ordinance has already always calculated it, as what the CPI rate is at the end of March of any given year, because it does adjust monthly. And for March 2021, at the end of March 2021 for this year, it's 2.2%. It might adjust differently in April, but we're not calculating the CPI adjustment based on any other month.
Thank you, Felicia. And with that, I mean, Ms. Lieberman. And with that, we'll turn to our planning manager, Ms. Finley, who will address further.
Before we go to Mrs. Finley, I think there was a question about, or a statement, I'm sorry to interrupt, about the process where the city can become a local enforcer. I was wondering, Mrs. Lieberman, if you could speak to that, or perhaps another staff. What is that process for the city to become an enforcer?
An enforcer?
For any discrepancies or any issues with the mobile home park property, such as the infrastructure, the roads, the streets, I should say?
That falls within the purview of HCD with the state.
Yes, but Mr. Stanton just said that there is a process that can be undertaken for the city to actually enforce some of these problems where they are not providing proper infrastructure.
Right. I believe, Mayor Beldelapena, that cities can request permission from HCD to provide, to actually act as an enforcement body on behalf of the state. We have not done so. It would obviously require, you know, a change to our code enforcement staffing and regulatory provisions in our code, so we've never asked to do that, because from our perspective, HCD does control it. But we could seek permission from HCD to do that, which some cities have done.
And I would just, I would just add to that, you know, that's above and beyond the item that's before us tonight, but I want to stress, if the council wants to have further dialogue of that in the future, it's a bigger dialogue question, because from a resource allocation standpoint, that would require an increase in staffing in order to take on responsibility like that. We'd also have to go through, there are a lot of burdens that come along that. I would want to give council a full and comprehensive report on what that looked like so you understand the financial and legal aspects.
Thank you. I just wanted to have that addressed, because it was mentioned by the last speaker. Thank you. Ms. Finley?
Thank you. I have a couple of items I'd like to respond to. Let's see, regarding appeals of the capital improvements to city council, the current ordinance for capital improvements and rehab work, the appeals go from the decisions made by the community development director or their designee, and then they're allowed to appeal to a hearing officer, which, instead of using the term hearing officer, we gave that responsibility in this proposed ordinance to the city manager or their designee, and then with no further appeals of those decisions. Then the, another, I just want to clarify that. The makeup of the RAC and the current ordinance is one tenant, or one homeowner, and one property owner, plus three at-large members, and then there are three alternates. One is a tenant, and one is a property owner, and then another at-large.
So technically, could we then make the other persons on the RAC planning commissioners? She, Mrs. Finley, just mentioned about the makeup of the RAC. It is made up of one mobile home park owner, I mean, mobile homeowner or tenant, a mobile home park property owner, and then three at-large members. And I'm wondering whether those three could be planning commissioners?
Right. So, so again, then what you're doing is you are creating, you are creating another body. And one of the concerns that we had the last time we did the rent adjustment hearings was while I, while we appreciate the fact that you have a level of familiarity and understanding and experience as either a mobile homeowner or a landowner, it is rife with conflicts. And the concerns that I have as an attorney is the due process requirements that are imposed on a committee or commission to hear these types of applications. We cannot have any bias that's associated with those decisions. And we struggled the last time with the fact that we had, we were, the commission struggled with an ability to come to a solution, which is the reason why the city ultimately entered into a mediated decision with all of the parks and all of the mobile homeowners, because the committee struggled with maintaining that independence and impartiality and mulling through the thousands of pages of information and the hours and hours of testimony.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mrs. Finley.
Okay, and then the one last thing I wanted to address, the question regarding what is just-in-reasonable-return mean? And it's defined in Section 525.09, and it talks about anything, what essentially in layman's terms, is that it's any physical improvement or financial or operating expenses that are not included in the capital improvements. So it's over and above the other, the other types of potential rent increases. The city typically will hire, hires an expert to help evaluate those applications and to provide a report and recommendation on the application materials before we would schedule it for hearing with the planning commissioner, the RAC. And I just wanted to clarify those points. So when you talk about training, there's going to be an expert on hand that is going to work with staff and the planning commission to make sure that it all complies with what's reasonable and what state law requires or allows.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Powers?
Yeah, I'll just bring kind of a final comment before moving to council questions. So as a reminder, the item before you tonight brings into compliance with state law, modifies the hearing body. The RAC that was there before, because these were so few and far between, a new RAC was recruited each time, so you would have new members that would come in and go. So it was very transitory in that, in that manner. And as Ms. Newman had pointed out, there were some legal concerns and complications. The ordinance before you tonight, we're amending it to be in compliance with state law, but the focus was because we're coming to the end of a 10-year mediated agreement, and I recognize there's a variety of opinions on that out there, but it has been in place and it has been functionally structured in that way, was to relieve as many of the remaining aspects as are in place. So to that end, that's what's before you. Council certainly has opportunity to make other changes should you desire.
Thank you. I will go to the first council member, Mr. Adam, and then Councilmember McNamee.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so there's just a very limited amount of circumstances that can affect rent. One is you discussed is the CPI, and that's remained fairly steady over the last 35 years. The other would be a capital improvement application, which goes before the community development department. And what was the appeal? I'm getting to that, Ed. No, I haven't gotten to that yet. The second one is a capital improvement application, which would be heard by the community development department. And what was the appeal process for that? Where did that go?
The community development director considers the application and makes a decision. And if there's any portion of it that wants, they want to appeal, it can be appealed to the city manager or their designee.
City manager?
Yes.
Okay. And then finally, the business of the just-in-reasonable-return hearing, which was supposed to go to the RAC, but seemingly basically did not. What would have been the appeal to the RAC?
So what's currently in the ordinance and what is proposed is that it goes before the commission, whichever commission that ends up being. And if there's an appeal, it goes to the city council.
It would go to the city council?
The just-in-reasonable-return application.
Okay. Because the last speaker talked about appeal, as if there wasn't any, if the Planning Commission became the hearing body. But in fact, that would not be accurate, would it? Because you could go from the Planning Commission to the city council, could you not?
Correct. Just for just-in-reasonable-return applications, the appeal would be from Planning Commission or RAC.
All the way to the top?
All the way to the top. For capital improvements, those appeals never went to the city council historically, and we're not making that recommendation today. We're keeping that appeal process the same. The only thing we're changing is this, instead of an appeal from the community development director to a hearing officer, which could be the city manager, or it could be another department head, or it could be department head, or it could be some third party we hire outside of the city, we streamlined it to be the city manager.
Okay. So, in, again, in the case of the just and reasonable return hearing, which have been few and far between, if any, the right of appeal would not be lost if it were shifted to the planning commission to hear it. You could appeal all the way to the, as high as you could get in this city, which is the City Council.
That is absolutely correct.
All right. I want to make sure that was cleared, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McNamie, followed by Councilmember Engler, Mayor Pratim Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to share with my council members, as well as the audience, thank you very much for being here to share your perspective on the situation, because that's been very valuable information from, I'm sure, the council's perspective up to date. I am not happy that we're having to go to Riverside to do code enforcement. One of the strengths of Thousand Oaks with 127,000 people is that we're very accessible, and that you can pick up a phone, you can email us, you can show up here at City Council to voice your opinions. That, I think, is a wonderful strength of our city, and by you being here, really has brought that to light. Again, I'm not happy we have to go to Riverside to drive that commute, to bring it out here. It's another example of, I believe, big government bureaucracies running amok. Why do we have something in Riverside doing code enforcement? How many hours of drive away to hear it at Thousand Oaks? Doesn't make sense. So, to Mr. Powers, I would ask you, please, can we put this on the agenda, if my other council members agree that we start looking at all the different aspects, as you suggested, to bring this in-house? And I think it would be worth the investment, from a city standpoint, and quality of life for these good people there, to not have to deal with this. Second point is, I have a real hard question for city staff regarding reasonable rate of return. One of the things that happens in rent control, whether you like it or not, is that if the owner of the property does not get a certain rate of return, monies don't go back in to improve the property or maintain it. And that's a challenge here, because, yes, we do have a section there for capital improvements that would raise up the rents that you would have to pay there as homeowners renting the property that you're on. However, there's a downside to that, in that the owners of the property may not want to put money back into it, and now you introduce something called the accounting shenanigans that goes on. There's what's called GAAP, General Accepted Accounting Principles. And if you ever jump into accounting, you can move numbers around in such a way that the owner actually made a lot of money, but in paper, it looks like they lost money. And that's not a really, real good way, as far as I'm concerned, to protect the true nature of the money exchange between you as the homeowner/tenant and the property owner. City staff, again, you're looking at the accounting returns to come in, to determine what the rate of return is for the investment. How do we protect ourselves and these good people from accounting shenanigans that can take place? I'm not saying they are, but they can take place. How do we protect them from that?
So, for rent increases proposed that exceed CPI, that's where the just and reasonable application comes into play. And part of the consideration with those applications is an investigation of code violations, how the funds would be used, the financing, and code compliance is part of it. That's a standard part of that application existing now, and that will be carried forward in the new ordinance if council chooses to move forward.
Okay. We'll see how this work plays out in the future.
If I could also add on to that, Councilmember McNamie, with respect to the last rent adjustment hearing and what would go on in the future, is if an application is filed, city actually retains an expert to assist us in evaluating the application and all the financial information that's provided by the park owner.
Okay. So, and accountants sort of will go over the books to, as there's an audit that is done and so forth?
Yeah. We recognize that, you know, we don't do these every day. Again, it's been 10 years. I think the one before that was many years before, so we hire someone who has expertise in the industry, who can help advise us on what they consider to be reasonable and not reasonable.
I believe the term's forensic accounting, if I remember correctly.
Yes, it's a forensic accounting, yes.
And let me, Ms. Lieberman? I, if I understand it correctly, it was 75% of CPI, that is now 100% of CPI as of 2018. And then, you said the March is the month now, is that just a snapshot in time for the CPI? Or is it the trailing 12 months, all averaged, with March being the end date? Do you follow the question?
I may defer to Ms. Oshida because she processes those applications and she knows the ins and outs of the minutia of that. I would say that they always calculate or implement the CPI figure ending March 31st of any given year. So that's the date. Whatever the CPI is for the Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim region, as determined by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, whatever that number is, that's the number. They don't-
So it's the average of the last 12 months, is what we're saying here? Is that correct?
It's actually the change, the annual change. So you're looking at the 2020 March, and then you compare changes of the 2021 March.
Okay. Now you're getting my engineering up here. So March was a snapshot. Let's say CPI for last year was 2%. March CPI for this year was 20%. As compared to the average CPI for 12 months from March to March, may not have been 20%. It could have been 4%, 5%. I'm asking which, and I want to be real clear on this, are we looking at just March as the snapshot of the March CPI? Or are we doing the last 12 months, all the months averaged CPI come together to get that final number? Do you follow the question? I don't know if I'm being clear.
So, so we are using the index for March 2020, comparing it to the new March 2021. So it's a change in the CPI.
How do they arrive at, how do they arrive at that number?
It is the preceding 12 months that goes into that March figure. So, the cap date is the 31st, but it's the preceding 12 months for each year, with the difference being into account, taken into account, as Ms. Oshida pointed out.
So it's annualized, okay.
And that is correct.
And that's what I mean by the average going all the way through. Thank you. Now, let me ask a question, and again, this is a, a question I don't mean to be facetious here, but why are we looking at Ventura, why is Ventura looking at Orange County, Los Angeles, Riverside, to arrive at the CPI? If this is Ventura County, we have nothing to do with their costs in those areas.
I would say that I did speak with our finance department, and that is the index that the city uses for most of its CPI calculations, and it's the index that's closest to us regionally.
And we don't have a regional CPI for Ventura County?
My understanding is we do not.
We need to talk about this. If I were to look at this economy from my MBA business training background, you put a pin in Thousand Oaks, and you draw a five-mile radius around it, and that will give you the CPI that these people should be paying. Does that make sense? And we have Cal Lutheran with tremendous econ program, and we have some experts there that put out the economic report every year annually, Matthew Fienup. You know, we can derive our own number and not rely on something else that's not anywhere close in geographic location to us. So, I, again, sorry, Mr. Powers, I'm kind of throwing this on you again. Can we start looking at this as another option to determine the CPI for the good people here to have a really reasonable CPI as compared to something coming from Los Angeles, Orange County, Riverside, that doesn't really apply to Thousand Oaks?
I'm sure, you know, anything's, anything is possible to take a look at. I would just add, CPIs are pretty generalized. They're kind of industry-standard pieces, so I, you know, I'm not an expert in it. If Ms. Boscarrino is here, she could probably speak more fluidly on the topic, but, you know, I'm certainly happy to bring up the topic. I don't know that, I certainly have any answers for you here tonight, if we could localize a CPI, but I do know, we benchmark it with all of our financial folks off of the index that is closest to us, that is, you know, part of the national indexing that occurs.
I don't know why Ventura County is not part of CPI for our own region and done it that way. Again, that's something perhaps we can talk to Ms. Boscarrino. Next is, I understand we have a right to, they have a right to appeal to council, correct? If there's something that they don't like regarding, you know, the reasonable rate of return or something of that nature? So I'm glad we talked about that. I do move forward, and I'd love to see the change of the language to read "mobile home owner/tenant." That would be excellent, and I'm glad we're, council seems to be on board with that. And again, the rate of improvement, again, with capital improvements, we have apparently not had the capital improvements that need to be done, whether it be potholes or rodents and vermin, and I'd like to see that also be part of our discussion here when we move forward with this as in a real level. So with that, I turn it back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pratim Engler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. At the risk of prolonging this a little further, the, when we have a just and reasonable discussion, and I don't think anybody here was part of any prior discussions, is, does a park's condition and maintenance come into part of that, as far as reasonable and concern? In other words, would that be balanced against any demands that the owner might have? And like I said, I wasn't part of any of these. I don't know if anybody else here was part of them.
So, the items that are listed in the, in the ordinance, as it reads, you're talking about general maintenance of the facility in the common areas?
Well, I'm just saying, if a park owner comes and says, "I need a just and reasonable hearing on getting more money from my tenants, my homeowners," thank you, that would the condition be part of the discussions as far as what rate of return he might expect?
Excuse me. So as part of that application, that's something that would be considered in reviewing the application, and as Ms. Noonan pointed out, the city would, in fact, hire an expert to help us evaluate that application and the criteria that goes into that, and the outcome would be expected to be fair and reasonable in terms of the decision to allow that increase or to reduce it.
I'm not an expert in it, but what I believe happens, and again, don't quote me on this, but this is my understanding of it as a layperson in this area. I believe that when, when an application is submitted for a reasonable rate of return, one of the issues is the valuation of the property, I would imagine. So the condition of the property would be relevant to what the reasonable rate of return is based on the, based on the valuation of the property. I believe that that's how it works. But again, I'm relying on, I'm relying on an expert.
No, not on my understanding. Reasonable rate of return, that we're looking at ROI, that's simply the dollars put in and what profit you get out at the bottom line, similar to a dividend or savings account.
That's what I was trying to get to, is what is part of that? In other words, all these fine folks have documented a lot of the issues at the, at different parks. Would that be part of the discussion irrespective of the ROI that is some economic viewpoint?
So, just to clarify, Councilmember Engler, you're inquiring whether or not lack of maintenance and upkeep of the park itself would be a factor in determining adjusted reasonable rate of return calculation?
Correct. That'd be part of the discussion as far as what would be a reasonable and just rate of return.
Okay.
For a, an owner that perhaps didn't maintain the property properly.
And under our previous, or under our current ordinance and what is proposed, it hasn't changed, and the failure of an, of a park owner to perform ordinary repair, replacement or maintenance would be a factor that is considered and reviewed as part of that calculation for just and reasonable return?
Okay. In terms of the RAC, and again, nobody here, with the possible exception of some of our staff, has ever been part of a RAC discussion for reasonable and just return. The, I'm curious, because a lot of what we're talking about tonight is whether to go with a planning commission or go back to another commission of a RAC. How did it work? What were the pitfalls of it? Did it work well, or did it not function properly? Intuitively, I think, when you have a group that has people who have a vested interest in the outcome, I'm not sure how well that would function. I'm just curious as, in actual terms, how did it function when it was working? Do we have anybody who was part of that, or was part of the city staff at that time?
Yes, the council did hear it, and I don't remember all, to be honest with you, my memory is a little foggy on it, since it's been more than 10 years, but it was very complicated, and we, they did, they didn't come to, we didn't come to an agreement. I cannot remember.
So, my recollection is that what happened in 2010 was, an application was filed, I'll just, it was for more than one park, but an application was filed for a rent adjustment based on the reasonable rate of return. It was very, very high. I think it was well over $800. Yeah, it was, it was significantly high. And city, the city staff hired an expert to evaluate those applica, the applications, and the expert opined that it should be lower than what the park owners were requesting. But even that, so that was the recommendation made to the RAC, and I believe the RAC approved that number as recommended by the, by the expert, and that decision was appealed to the City Council by the homeowners. When it came to the City Council, prior to a decision on it, actually, City Council was going to make a decision to approve those numbers, however, at that time, City Council decided to try to mediate a comprehensive and global settlement to it. That's my recollection of it. And ultimately, we had a mediated settlement, mediated agreement, and the City Council adopted an ordinance under that.
And that resulted in the 10-year moratorium and all that?
That's correct. That's correct. But the, but the initial application that was submitted by the park owners was very, very high, and what was ultimately approved was lower.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Patrick, Mr. Heager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I did have the privilege of actually working with the RAC commission at the last meeting. So, to Mr. Engler's questions, there were some challenges. One of the things, when you have these rent adjustment, or these just and reasonable adjustment requests, is that they come in, you don't know when they're going to come in, and they're very complicated because they have a lot of documentation. So before the owner submits it, the owner has to do an assessment themselves as to whether or not they should actually go through this process, because it's going to cost them some money as well to do this. And then we have a, we have a time period in which we have to take their application and review it, and then we have the consultant come in to help us review it on behalf of, as an independent consultant, not the owner's consultant, they already have, of course, and not for the tenant's consultant, which they may or may not have. And so, to your, to your point, Councilmember Engler, it's about the timing. And so, one of the concerns you always have when you have these, any type of public hearing is due process. And when you have someone who's actually making a request, you can't delay it too long, or there's a, there's a, at least a possibility that they would say it's a takings. And so, we have to be efficient with how we handle these processes and ensure that we get from point A to a decision in a reasonable rate of time. And so, one of the reasons why staff is recommending going to planning commission is because, since we don't know when we're going to have these specific types of very complicated applications, to get a commission together, again, in the past, it was one representative from the owner, one representative from the mobile home owners, and then three at-large individuals, to get them brought up into the Brown Act and to get ready for the hearings and to understand the concepts, that just took a little time. It's not like we cannot do it. This is that, for efficiency's sake, we thought that having the planning commission do it would be, make more sense, and we could focus really on the application itself, not having these other issues that come into play, when you have to make sure that you have a public hearing with due process rights and ensure that we have an actual, we eliminate that issue down the run. And so, you, when you look at the old, the cases that you have in these, in these cases, the lawsuits, actually, later on, if they ever happen, you look at those things like takings and time and due process. Did the owner have a right to be heard? Did the tenants have a right to be heard? Did everybody get the evidence that they needed to do? And do you have a- And do you have a foundation for the decisions? And as Ms. Noonan stated, and she's absolutely correct, is we had two applications, we had two separate hearings for those two different parks, and ultimately, there was a decision that the rack commission made a decision to go with the recommendation from staff and its consultant. And that was going to be appealed. And during that appeal process is when we had the mediations, and the mediation ultimately, in an incredible way, resolved the issues to the most of the extent.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the background audit, trying to weigh whether we should go back to a rack or just go with our planning commission. In terms of the ordinance, don't we have a schedule within the ordinance that lists the types of capital improvements that would qualify? And if I remember reading it, doesn't it extend the payback time toward the owners by a year or two? In other words, the other one was like, they build a fence, it's 10 years, and now it's 12. Try to give me a little update on that as well.
So, if you're asking, I'm not sure if you're asking me or other staff, and I apologize that I can't see staff.
I'm sorry, Patrick. I was asking staff, in-house staff.
Thank you, sir.
So, those capital improvements, that useful life chart that is attached to the resolution in front of you today has been updated because it hasn't been updated for over 10 years. And so, those categories were looked at to see if the timelines and the minimum monetary amounts for each of those capital improvements were still valid, if they needed to be updated, and the recommendation was that we do so. And those are churches that are amortized over the life of that improvement to the tenants or the homeowners.
Yeah, see that the amortization rate was extended somewhat?
On some of the categories, yes, they were, as well as the minimum amount of money that the mobile home park owner would have to spend in order to even get, to be able to put in an application for those things. It was much lower. What's being recommended in front of you tonight is a higher amount that would have to be spent.
Yeah, I remember the threshold amount went up by 50% or something like that. Okay, that's all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think it's really fitting that we should talk about this subject right after our long debate on the homeless. You know, a lot of people in these mobile home parks are like one step above that, who, you know, this is housing of their last refuge, that, you know, if we have a place where people can still have homeownership in Thousand Oaks going with the current rise in property values, it's in mobile home parks. And so, I think we need to pay specific attention to that. I don't know what our latitude is for decision-making tonight, but if I could just take some of these one at a time, I would be in favor of the 75% of CPI and a maximum of 7% on the... And if I understand, the second reason for a possible rent increase, or whatever it's called, I guess rent is the right word, adjustment for capital improvements, does it say "and maintenance"? Is that in it? Capital improvements and, is maintenance included in the second reason?
It's capital improvements, capital improvements and rehabilitation work.
Does that include, like fixing potholes and...
It's in the definition. All the common areas or amenities of the mobile home park.
So that would increase, or that would include...
It says streets, driveways, curbs and gutters, sidewalks, water, wastewater, and other utility systems, and other similar improvements.
Well, I don't like to accuse anybody of a conspiracy, but I understand at Ranch Mobile Home Park, there's a recent change in ownership, and I don't know how long ago that was, but I think in the time period, the person has, the new owner, has let the place run down. And if he's letting it run down so that he can get more money for maintenance, that would seem like a rather unfair tactic on my, and I believe you need somebody really. I agree with what was said earlier by Councilman McNamee. I understand the reason you have to go to Riverside is that these are considered mobile homes, that they're mobile units, and so, isn't the Riverside facility dealing with something that's capable of moving? Is that how Riverside gets into it? Well, they're called mobile homes, aren't they? I mean, I think that's the reason you go to Riverside. I think we need some way to change that and bring it back here, because if you have to go to Riverside, you know, you're not going to have a reasonable time period involved in trying to improve maintenance. So, I think we need some way, if we're going to be involved, or the planning commission's going to be involved, to actually do inspection ourselves and see what the situation is. You know, rather than a snapshot at some point in time, "Oh, look, it's run down." Well, why is it run down? Well, because the owner let it run down so he can get more money for maintenance. I mean... You know, these mobile homes, and I'm not going to continue this, but they're the last refuge of people. You know, they're the last place of homeownership that can be afforded by people. And we want to keep people out of homelessness. And in my opinion, we need to do everything we can to give the owner a reasonable rate, but don't let him, you know, pull shenanigans, or whatever the term is, you know, in order to raise the rent. I think we have a way of inspecting and see what that owner did to get in the position it's in so that he can then want money for maintenance. And by the way, Mr. Sanders, I'd like to apologize if I was a little rude with you when I told you I was through asking questions. I didn't, I didn't mean to be abrupt. I, you know, I know this is a difficult matter, you know, like Solomon, you have to divide the baby, maybe. I don't know how you do it perfectly, but I think if we're going to err, Madam Mayor, we ought to err on the side of the owners of the home.
Of the mobile homes.
And so, I would, in conclusion, I would endorse the 7%, the 7% maximum with the 75% CPI. And I would also say that we need a way of finding out the true condition of these mobile homes. And I believe that we can come to a fair and reasonable conclusion if we do that. But, you know, we, I think we ought to do what we can to maintain affordable housing in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. And we do have a couple of other questions. I just wanted to find out about the 7% of CPI. We heard, although it is 2.2%, I heard 5%, some maybe paying 5%, I'm not sure, but what, how can we find out whether what they're paying is above and beyond what they should be paying? They said that they are paying 5%.
I'm sorry if there was any confusion. What I stated was that since 1986, CPI hasn't increased by that much. In 1991, which was the highest CPI year for the month ending March, that was at 5.5% in 1991. But in the last five years, CPI has not exceeded 3.8%.
That's exactly what you said, but I heard that they paid more than that. Is that true? Somebody mentioned that you paid... Okay. Then I, okay, then I misunderstood. I'm glad, I am glad I asked about that. Regarding the appeals process, the last case was appealed to the council by the property owners, the mobile home park owners, and they had to pay the appeals fee, correct? Because they were appealing it to the council? So, so say if the mobile home park owners didn't like the result, then they would come up with the, what is it, $2,000 to appeal it to the council? Yes. Okay. Okay, then, go ahead, Ms., Councilmember McNamee.
Just one follow-up because of the discussion that's occurred. This is out to city staff, but I think it would be more in line with Mr. Powers. Here's my request, and see if we can do this. We know how fast city government, as well as government in general, moves, and as you heard, I'm advocating moving the inspections, the code enforcement, to in-house as compared to relying on Riverside. That may take a process, a long time. My thought is, is it worthwhile sending out a code enforcement officer from the city of Thousand Oaks to drive through and do the code enforcement now to get data as to the deficiencies, and then approach, again, this at a state level, State Assemblywoman Irwin, as well as State Senator Stern, with data and documentation that, here are the deficiencies, would you move on this now? We're trying to take it in-house, but it's going to be a few months, so all of you don't have to sit and wait for us to get it done.
I want to be clear about expectations here because there is a process that would be, have to go through with state HCD, so I, you know, I don't know what that process looks like. I don't know what the burdens are required of doing that. Usually, if you're going to take on X, they ask you'll make you take Y and Z as well. And so, I just want to make sure that the council has a clear picture when they come forward with any discussion around that. When you take on that responsibility, you're also taking on the legal responsibility, and that means taking the cases to trial. And so, there's going to have to be, make sure you have an understanding of what that looks like from a city attorney's office standpoint as well, which we'll include in the report. Now, as it relates to doing condition reports in there today, I'll let Ms. Noonan weigh in. I, you know, would probably have some concern about the park owners filing something, but, you know, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Right. So, a couple of concerns I have with doing anything tonight is because what we've agendized, again, you know, what staff's intention was with respect to making the changes to the mobile home park ordinance, it was not to do a comprehensive modification to the mobile home park ordinance, because from staff's perspective, it has worked very well for both the mobile homeowners and the park owners. So, our intent, when we initially looked at this, was the realization that the moratorium on rent adjustments was going to expire, we had to do something. But the intention was to keep the majority of the ordinance as identical as we could to what currently exists, because we think it's a good model. So with respect to questions about the CPI, we made no changes to that because that's what it currently is. With respect to appeal rights, we made no changes because that's what it is. The code enforcement issue is not on the agenda. It's never been contemplated, so it's not anything that I feel comfortable tonight to agree to do, because it's not been agendized. That is something that the city manager and I can work on bringing back to the city council, some, you know, some information on what the process is, but as we sit here tonight, I'm just not comfortable with saying, "Yes, we can do that," because it's not something that is within the purview of what's on the agenda tonight.
Good point, I understand. But the idea, though, is that we've had some, a number of great statements from the audience and the residents, and I'm asking Mr. Powers, perhaps maybe at the next meeting, we put this on there to have a discussion that we can actually act, make, do actions, if that's enough time, because we're heading towards a summer recess, like the CPI, like the inspections, to encourage and document what's going on.
Yeah, just from a timing perspective, it's doubtful that we'll make that timeframe. Just want to be honest about that, but we'll certainly aim to do something in the fall, early fall.
Thank you. To move this along now, we, let me see, do I have any, Mr. Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, I, folks, I think we need to refocus here on what we're doing, and I, don't get me wrong, ladies and gentlemen, there isn't a soul on this council that doesn't appreciate the value of mobile homes to the city of Thousand Oaks. It's the true affordable housing source that we have, and we're very, very appreciative of that, and we understand that. But what we, we've gone off into all these different areas that really aren't what we're tasked to do this evening. If we get involved with code enforcement with eight different mobile home parks, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars every year to accomplish that. Now, should we do that or not? I don't know, but I don't think that's really on the agenda this evening. If we talk about the CPI adjustment, is that legally defensible? Will the mobile home park owners come back and say, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, we object to this," and the next thing you know, we have a lawsuit on our hands? Now, maybe that is the thing to do, but again, that's not what we're looking at this evening. We're looking at this evening of simply re-upping a 10-year moratorium that expired, and the staff is suggesting to us, the primary issue in there, the staff is suggesting that rather than using the rack, we use the planning commission to review any of these reasonable rate adjustments. And Ms. Noonan has made the point that the rack could be considered to be biased, in a sense, correct?
Yes, there are potential due process and bias issues associated with it.
Thank you. Whereas the planning commission, and don't forget, the planning commission is appointed by each one of us. Mr. McNamee has his planning commissioner, Bob does, Claudia does, I do, Ed do. They represent us, and they represent you, because in essence, you voted on them. It seems to me that, what's ironic is, one way or another, if any of these hearings go before the planning commission, it's probably going to be appealed to the council. Because if the planning commission hears a rent adjustment from a mobile home park owner, and they agree to it, you'll appeal. If they disagree with it, the mobile home park owner will appeal. So one way or another, it's going to come back to us anyway. So, does it make any difference if it's the rack or the planning commission hearing it? I'm not really sure it does, to be honest with you. Anyway, the point of the matter is, and I think, I hope you all agree with me, that we need to refocus here on what's in front of us, which really, the primary issue is, do we allow the planning commission to hear these rent adjustments?
I understand. I understand your frustration, but I did allow a little bit more leeway, simply because so many of the speakers...
Well, it's a good discussion, and there's, these are points to consider in the future.
Exactly. And so, that is why I allowed a little bit more leeway for the discussion, because some issues were brought to our attention that frankly, I had not heard about. And so, yes, we always have the stories of the mobile home park owners not necessarily doing the maintenance and the repair that they're supposed to be doing, that, you know, I have heard that many, many times. But that will be looked at once we go through an application, you know, we will have a consultant, and the park will be looked at to see if the park needs the capital improvement. So, my question is for staff, is, in 2018, it changed from 75 to 100%. Was, were the homeowners at that time notified that it was changing to 100%? Or did that just automatically happen?
I believe they were notified because it was part of the mediated settlement.
Okay, very good. And so, if we were to go back to 75%, what would be the ramifications, if there were any?
Well, the park owners are not here to comment on that, and they were part of that negotiated settlement. So, they bought into the increase to 100% CPI, as did the tenant group or the homeowners group. So, to now change it back without input from the park owners might be problematic.
Okay. Would there be time to get their input on this?
I don't see that happening... I don't see that happening.
No, not tonight. I know.
I don't see that happening before your recess and before the moratorium expires.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion that we move forward with what's here and then bring it back up on the agenda in the fall to address the concern that you have? So we meet our deadline, but also bring up the 75% in the fall so the owners could be here to comment?
That is certainly a possibility. So regarding the 7% CPI, can, could that be lowered? And what would be the ramifications?
There is no 7% CPI.
I'm sorry. The cap. C-A-P, the cap.
Right, the cap of the secret. So just to make sure everyone understands, you know, with respect to formulas, city council can ultimately change that. The concern with doing it tonight is staff never intended to make those changes. So from a due process standpoint, it would be not fair to make those changes having not given an opportunity for the park owners to comment on it. So from staff's perspective, our recommendation is to leave it as it is tonight. If there is concerns over the actual, the ultimate CPI, my recommendation would be if there is a change that council wants to make, it would be leave it at 100% CPI, but add the 7% cap. And that, I think, is a reasonable compromise because as Ms. Lieberman indicated, the CPI over the last 30 years has never exceeded 5.5%. So capping it at 7% I think would be a reasonable compromise if that's, if the city council desires to do something with it tonight. Again, I'm a bit uncomfortable with changing the 100% to 75% given the fact that staff has never made any indication that we wanted, that we were suggesting those changes. And it would be, from a due process perspective, I think just as the park, the homeowners would want an opportunity to be heard, the park owners would want an opportunity to be heard as well.
Of course. And so I'm wondering whether we missed an opportunity to get their input. But, you know, I mean, we could bring it back, but who is going to go in the fall back to 75% when they can have 100% now?
Madam Mayor, I think, since it was not agendized tonight, I think we are left with just going with what we have. These other ideas which everybody brought up, which are some good ideas, I think need to be studied and looked at.
Yes.
And then we can either act on it. If we want to put together a small ad hoc committee or something like that, that'd be fine for me. But I think we need to look at these ideas. It's not on our agenda tonight. I'm afraid we'd be browned out right out of it.
No, no, but I'm mentioning it because Councilmember, not Engler, Jones was mentioning the 75%. So that is the reason why I was bringing it up.
And if I may, just to, you know, level set us here about where we were 10 years ago and where we are today. Part of the reason that we ended up in the place we were is the, from the park owner's perspective, they were saying that they hadn't had an adequate opportunity to keep up. The idea of the mediated settlement, recognizing there's a variety of opinions on it, was it was a settlement. It did last for 10 years. And it had the function, at least from the ownership standpoint, of level setting. And so we are here today with what's been a relative equilibrium for a period. And so we're not entering a new mediated agreement. That's not what's here. What's here is what's been in place, and we have to extend it and make some modifications to it. Now, the council has, always has the opportunity to do those things. But just as a reminder of how we arrived at the finite nature of the agenda item tonight, went through a period of level setting, set a new equilibrium, so we didn't have some of the situations we were having back then with these dramatic requests.
And just to restate it, or to summarize, is that the current contract is basically staying in place with the changes in 2018 going to 100%. You can still appeal the rate of return to the council. The capital improvement was never able to be appealed to the city council. And so that is something that, really, it isn't changing. And the only thing tonight, as we said at the outset of this discussion and this hearing, is that really, nothing is changing with the exception of moving the decision-making responsibility from the rental adjustment commission to the planning commission. And that is basically, that's basically all this is.
So with that, Mayor, may I make a motion, please?
You can go ahead and make. Let's see. Mr. Jones is, he still is up.
Yeah, just very quickly, I'd just like the people to know that we're limited on what we can do tonight because we have to do what's on the agenda. And so we can't get into other areas. But I believe all of us heard loud and clear all the comments that you made. And I think subsequently, when we deal with this, we're going to certainly take those into consideration. And I would really thank you for coming out tonight and making us aware of these things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Adam, go ahead.
All right, yeah. And Ed and Bob are right. It's been a good freewheeling discussion. It's great to have you out here. However, some of these issues are not agendized, and we really, in all fairness, can't vote on them. However, what we do have in front of us, as the mayor pointed out, is a recommendation by staff. And I'm prepared at this point to move that we, in fact, vote on that recommendation, which is...
One, two, and three?
Thank you.
One, two, and three?
One, two, what, what's the number? Oh, 8C, 8C.
Would you please include the change of the description of mobile home park?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Does everybody think that's a, I see a lot of head nodding. I like that idea, where we describe their mobile home park as owners slash tenants. Is that...
Yeah, we want owners slash tenants.
Do we like the owner slash tenant appellation? Yeah, okay. So we can get that done.
Appellation, ooh, I love that word.
Appellation, thank you. All right, so that's my motion.
And if I might add that staff will follow up on the questions regarding code enforcement and bring back subsequent discussion from the council.
There we have it.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0. And I do have an ordinance title to read into the record. It is ordinance repealing and replacing in its entirety the provisions of Chapter 25 of Title V, Mobile Home Rent Stabilization of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code.
Thank you. And again, we will notify you when we have the other issues coming up. And that will be after the summer break, probably the fall. Thank you. And with that, we will open the next public hearing, which is 8A Landscape...
Mayor, can we take maybe a five-minute break? Real quick?
Real quick? Okay.
We've been at it for four hours.
When we come back from recess, we will go to Item 8A, the public hearing for landscape and lighting.
Good evening again. We will now go to our public hearing, number 8C. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, item 8A, correct?
8A, yes, I misspoke. 8A, thank you.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A, Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, number 79-2, annual levy. And at this time, Madam Mayor, we do not have any public speakers.
This is the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District annual levy, and this will be presented by Senior Civil Engineer, Mr. Jim Taylor. Haven't seen you in a while. Hi there.
Good evening. Yes, it's a pleasure to see you in person and without a mask on. How about that? Good evening, Mayor Bill De La Peña and council members. The city's Landscape and Lighting District provides funds for ongoing maintenance and utility costs for landscape and lighting throughout Thousand Oaks. The landscaping district is apportioned into 39 zones within the city, and the lighting district is divided into six zones. The extent of the landscaping zones are shown in this graphic in blue. Through an agreement with the Ventura County Auditor Controller, approved at the May 25th council meeting, the costs for lighting on landscape zones are assessed upon properties via the property tax roll as described in the final engineer's report included within In accordance with the district formation documents and the final engineer's report, assessment rates for all but one zone will be adjusted this year by the allowable 3%. Note that Landscape Zone 37A near Mountain Creek Drive in Newbury Park is currently being subsidized by the city, thus an increase of 11% is being applied to reduce the subsidy and to fund past and anticipated additional extensive maintenance costs in the area. The annual increase for all lighting zones is also 3%. Landscape assessment rates are proposed to increase by $9 per year or roughly 76 cents per month for the average resident. Note, the maximum rate shown here generally apply to regions of the city with many landscaped medians, parkways, street trees, and weed abatement, such as Zone 2 near Lynn Road, Greendale, and Reno Road, Zone 17 in the Olson and Wildwood area, and Zone 27 with the large Crown View open space parcel, but only 11 parcels being assessed for the weed abatement. Lighting assessments are proposed to increase to the maximum approved rate, an increase of 50 cents per year from last fiscal year. The Landscape and Lighting District continues to face challenges with escalating irrigation water rates and electricity costs. In addition, Public Works is beginning to allocate funding toward landscape rehabilitation projects focused upon reducing water consumption as well as using solar irrigation controllers. Lighting district revenues continue to lag behind expenses and do require some general fund subsidies. The recommendations are listed in your staff report, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you so much for this report. Appreciate it. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, just one real quick question.
Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
In terms of the District 37A, you said we needed to increase that by 11 and change. What about that district made it fall so far behind?
That particular zone comprises the shopping center out there off of Reno near Kimber, the Albertson Center. And as such, there was a lot of street trees that had to be tended to this past year that were unexpectedly expensive, and so we're trying to recoup some of the extra expenditures that we had to spend this year, which constituted a city of subsidy. And then we're also increasing the rates to try to offset some of that loss.
So is a kind of a one-time and then going forward type thing?
We anticipate that, yes, it'll be a one-time thing.
Yeah, and if I may, Nader Hidari here, that increase is relatively nominal in terms of dollar amount. It's a $6 per parcel increase. It was low to begin with, so.
Per year?
Yes.
Any other questions? None. I think then we have a motion already by Councilmember Adam.
Well, yeah.
Close to public hearing. Close to public hearing. And now you may speak.
Yeah, well, listen, I think this is money well spent. Thousand Oaks is beautifully maintained. I think we would all agree with that, so with that, I would move 8A.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. We're going to our next public hearing, and that is the Urban Water Management Plan Update. Madam Clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8B, the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan Update, 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, Addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan MI 2594. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We do have one individual that has presented a speaker card, and pursuant to council standards, the speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. And this public hearing will be presented by our utilities maintenance supervisor, Mike Devlaovic. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Devlaovic.
Yes.
Devlaovic. Welcome. I don't think we've seen you before.
First time.
Here. Okay. Congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. This evening, we're presenting to the council the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan. My name is Mike Devlaovic, joined with Nader Hidari, Dr. Helen Cox, and online Katrina Paez from Kennedy Jenks, our project manager. So the items proposed tonight are the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, the 2020 Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and the Addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. So an urban water management plan tells an agency's water story. It's intended to function as a planning tool to guide broad perspective decision-making by management of water suppliers. It provides the framework for long-term water planning that ensures adequate water supplies for existing and future demands. It's required by the state, and it's to be submitted to DWR every five years, and compliance with the Urban Water Management Plan determines eligibility for state grants and loans. The Urban Water Management Plan Act was passed in 1983 in response to drought. Each evolution of the Urban Water Management Plan, new requirements are imposed in response to periods of drought, such as the 2010, 2015, and 2020. Some of the requirements of the Urban Water Management Plan are service area, assessment of population, water use, both past and future, water supplies and reliability, and the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. So a linear growth rate was assumed for the planning period based upon population growth predictions and current water demands. City staff coordinated the Urban Water Management Plan Population Assessment with CDD to estimate a 13% growth rate within the city, within the city service area through 2045. Demand projections, the graph to the right represents water use since 2010, so the past 10 years of water use. As you can see, in 2013, we had the highest water use, followed by three consecutive years of water reduction, which includes water conservation efforts and post-drought hardening. Projected water use applies the 13% linear population increase through 2045. And as you may know, the city is 100% reliant on Cuyagus Municipal Water District for our water. Cuyagus has determined that supplies are anticipated to be sufficient to meet city demands through 2045 for a normal year, single dry year, and multi-dry year event. And the city is also looking into the potential for development of groundwater with the city's groundwater utilization project. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan is a plan of action to be followed during supply and demand shortages. The state is recommending a move to a six-tiered system from the current system, which is a three-tiered system. So as you can see, in 2015, we have the three-tiered system with a 50% reduction in our water supply, and what the state's recommending is to move to a six-tiered system with the same percentages for the same water supply shortages. And lastly, the proposed addendum to the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan will satisfy the state requirements for the delta policy. And staff's recommendations can be found in the staff report. This concludes this presentation, and we would be happy to take questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I appreciate it. We do have a public speaker, but wanted to see if there are any questions from council Then I will call on Roseanne Witt via Zoom this evening, I believe. Do we have Roseanne Witt?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Roseanne Witt from Thousand Oaks, speaking for the Conejo Climate Coalition. Our urban water management plan must demonstrate how TO will meet water needs, including during drought and catastrophic supply interruptions through 2045. The staff report says a notice of public hearing was published in the local newspaper. In TO, that would be the acorn, which every home receives at no cost, but said notices did not appear there. So it's not surprising that, per the staff report, no comments were received from water agencies or the public. Residents were not notified sufficiently in advance of this hearing to be able to read all 1,094 pages, though doing so is critical to our ability to discuss and offer recommendations for water policy and programs in our general plan, which must include comprehensive, integrated water resource planning. During a statewide mega drought, TO is 100% dependent on imported water, which is delivered by an aqueduct that is structurally compromised by land subsidence resulting from overdrawn and collapsing underlying aquifers. Meanwhile, climate impact forecasts include more drought, less frequent rainfall in more concentrated events, and greater risk of flooding and mudslides. So we expect a new GPU paradigm for water conservation, water reuse, and stormwater management that improves local water self-sufficiency and reduces our dependency on imports as well as our vulnerability to drought and water scarcity. For example, our general plan should specify at least 50% improved water efficiency above the current average for all new construction. TO should also require new construction to incorporate gray water systems for irrigation and permeable pavement, rain gardens, and bio swales to capture and store stormwater so as to increase natural ground infiltration, recharge the Conejo Valley groundwater basin, reduce threats from flash flooding and mudslides, and preserve native trees that naturally enhance water storage and reduce stormwater runoff, while also providing shade and evaporative cooling that in turn reduces urban heat island impacts. Once these state mandated reports are approved, we understand and expect that they will be revisited when the general plan is updated. We also expect a widely promoted public forum about the city's water supply with a website where the data they contain can be readily found so all residents can access it and assumptions underlying city projections. Water is obviously also one of the most important topics for the Climate and Environmental Action Plan. We appreciate that the state requires, and Public Works has completed this five-year report, which can help all our residents better understand what is needed in the GP and the SEAP to ensure Thousand Oaks residents never find ourselves without water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I actually agree with everything Roseanne Witt said. I will be very much in favor of following through with her suggestions. All right. We can now go back to staff to address any of the issues raised or questions raised.
Yes, sure.
Yes, sure. I'd like to reply to some of the questions that were raised. In terms of publishing the notice for the meeting tonight, this public hearing was posted and noticed in the same fashion that all of the public meetings we have. Public hearings are noticed, and it was noticed on June 8th and June 15th in all the required publications. And in some of the other elements that were mentioned, yes, these are all part of elements that are being studied with the Climate and Environmental Action Plan and with the general plan. And as mentioned earlier in the presentation, we are exploring opportunity to develop local groundwater in the area as well to reduce our reliance on the state water project.
What about some of the other issues or items, such as a gray water and so forth, requiring that finally in new construction?
As I mentioned, yes, so those are elements that are in the larger elements beyond the scope of the hearing tonight that are part of the, you know, being looked at in terms of the general plan. And Dr. Cox can maybe comment on those elements a little bit.
Yeah, I think Roseanne would mention that would be part of the general plan discussion, so.
Yes, it's something that we discussed within, we did have one meeting of our Climate and Environmental Action Plan Stakeholders Group that was devoted to looking at water issues. And we did consider most of the things that Roseanne mentioned, gray water, local water supplies interconnection with other water agencies for resilience, and also what happens to our effluent from the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant and possibilities for that. So, those are all items that are being considered. As part of the Climate and Environmental Action Plan, we've taken lists of those possible strategies, and they will be presented to the public and for, you know, engagement and to get feedback on different possibilities there. Some of them may appear in the final plan or in the draft plan that will be brought to council, but all of those will have various cost-benefit analyses, you know, conducted for them as part of that plan.
Thank you. All right. I'm glad that, Mr. Hidari, that you mentioned that it did appear in the Acorn on June 8th and June 15th.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, it was published in the Ventura County Star, and we do alternate between both newspapers in order to meet our publishing requirements, as the Star does have a little bit more leeway versus the Acorn. It's a weekly publication.
I see. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right. And if there are, well, let me see. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, in fact, not only are we tapping into the groundwater, which is so abundant here, because it really hasn't been tapped into since we used to water the cattle decades and decades ago. It's been sitting there. We are also coming up with a regional approach, are we not? And working with the, I think Cliff was telling me, and working with the city of Westlake Village to process some of this groundwater, are we not?
Yeah, it's the Las Verges Municipal Water District. There's been some discussions between us and them, as well as Cuyagis, and looking at regional solutions that would kind of break apart from just looking at, you know, more isolated solutions that may provide a greater benefit.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. McNamie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted that we're looking at water reuse from the Hill Canyon Wastewater Plant, because that would enhance the Las Verges Water District's reverse osmosis plant's efficiencies. And that's the direction for the 21st century for water reuse. So, I'm delighted we're moving in that direction, Mr. Hidari. I've got a question for you, though. Actually, I don't know if it would be you for the doctor. The other side of that coin for water reuse from wastewater is also stormwater collection and reuse. Is the studies that you're going to be presenting to us include stormwater?
The stormwater reuse is a newly emerging area, and there isn't a lot of cities that are beneficially capturing the stormwater and reusing it or putting it into the water supply or treating it. But that's something, obviously, that is there. It's not as abundant as, you know, potentially groundwater could be or other sources, particularly because of the lack of stormwater, especially as of late. But it is another area we're looking at. And in fact, Las Verges with that plant they're building, they're looking at ways to augment their flow during the summer months where they normally would run dry, and that's another area they're looking at. And we have a large geographic area, Thousand Oaks, so that there's elements being looked at there to try to put that all together and come up with solutions to, you know, make stormwater into a resource.
Thank you. Reason I say is that if history proves itself, we will see rain at some time in the near future. Exactly when, don't know, but I'd like to be prepared for it. The challenge, again, as you know, with rainwater is the quick downpour of water and the huge amount. And how do you capture that? And then, how do you store it and use it through the rest of the year if it does sustain you through the rest of the year? So, you are, from what I understand, looking at stormwater capture and reuse as a other option here too, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Look forward to seeing how that develops. That'll be excellent to see. Thank you.
All right. There are no more questions, and then I will entertain a motion. First, we're going to close the public hearing, and then I will entertain questions. I mean, a motion.
I'll move 8B, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Adam moves 8B. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember McNamie?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now move to item 9A, Department Report, Benefits and Compensation for Executive Managers, and this will be presented by City Manager Drew Powers.
Thank you so much, Mayor De La Peña. As the council knows, you did approve the various contracts with our represented bargaining units earlier tonight. In accordance with state law, I'll be providing a brief update regarding our executive benefits resolution. Our executive managers are not covered by a bargaining, a collective bargaining agreement or contract. But the item before you tonight represents a revised comprehensive benefits and compensation resolution for executive managers that is within the same authority provided by the city council for these unrepresented employees and is presented for adoption. So, to stress, the package that is there in place for the executive managers is in alignment with the same package that went to the other units, just slight adjustments in various areas. It does represent salary adjustments in the 2.5% range per year, or two-year agreement. It is a merit-based salary adjustments, as the council is aware. Adjustments to the cafeteria plan, some range adjustments on our various positions to keep up with market. And it is consistent with what was negotiated with the Senior Management Association. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions by council?
Just a quick question, Madam Mayor. In terms of competitiveness with other agencies, are we competitive here, Mr. Powers?
Yeah, and that is part of our bargaining effort. When we go through that every two years, we do look at our ranges and do a range adjustment. There are, we did a market survey on all different classifications. In this case, our Assistant City Manager, City Clerk, Community Development Director, Cultural Affairs Finance Director, Human Resource Director, Library Director, Public Works Director, in some form or fashion, receive some range adjustment to keep up with market. And that market analysis is done to ensure that we don't slip behind, as some cities do, and I know you're aware from previous municipal experience, so that we're competitive in the marketplace. That is not related to salary itself. That's just the range that's in place to ensure that we're staying current.
Okay. No further questions, and I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I will move the resolution adopting comprehensive benefits and compensation for executive managers and rescinding resolution number 2019-036, Resolution NO 2021.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a motion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
No.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember McNamie voting no.
Thank you. And we will now move to, let's see, City Manager, follow-up items, 13A.
Thank you so much, Mayor De La Peña. We do have, our last meeting before the summer recess will be two weeks from tonight on the 6th of July. We will have an update on our Hill Canyon Treatment Plant and the master plan out there. We will have our TO Arts Year End Report, and we will have a community development item for a global extension of pre-screens that are still outbound to ensure that we meet deadlines associated with the upcoming general plan.
Thank you so much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned until our next regular meeting, which is going to be the last meeting of the, before we take our summer break, on July 6th. So, happy 4th of July.